Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of October the 28th, 2025. It is now 7:01 PM. Mr. Clerk, may I please have the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Torres Walker is excused. Councilmember Freitas?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha?
Here.
Mayor Berno?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum at 7:01 PM.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Excellent. It is now time for public comments. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the rules? Speaker rules?
Thank you. Welcome to a meeting of the Antioch City Council. Your attendance is appreciated. The State Ralph M. Brown Act guarantees the public's right to address the city council within the framework of speaker rules. Because agendas encompass many business items, speaker rules enable the meeting to be efficiently conducted and concluded at a reasonable hour. The city council can only take action on items that are listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak about an item not on the agenda, the public comment section of the agenda is for you. Unagendized comments are provided until no later than 7:30 PM when the city council moves on to agenda items. There is another opportunity for public comments at the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak either during public comments or during an agenda item, fill out a speaker request form located at the entrance of the council chambers. Please place the speaker request form in the tray near the city clerk before the council meeting begins. This will enable us to call upon you to speak. It is important the speaker request form is retained as public record and as such may be shared with others upon request in line with the California Public Records Act. On your speaker request form, please identify if the comment is for announcement of community events, public comment, or a specific agenda item. No one may speak more than once on an agenda item or during public comments. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called to speak. When you are called to speak, please limit your comments to the time allotted, up to three minutes or at the discretion of the mayor. The consent calendar is a group of items which are determined to be routine. These items are usually considered all at once and approved without further discussion. If you are opposed to action which is recommended for an item on the consent calendar, please submit a speaker request form before the meeting and place in the speaker card tray near the city clerk. This will enable the item to be removed from the consent calendar and call upon you to speak. If the meeting appears to be going late, the city council may decide to continue some items until a subsequent meeting. The city council will try to make this determination around 10:45 PM. It is the goal to stop discussing agenda items by not later than 11 o'clock PM.
Perfect. Thank you. How many speaker cards do we have?
We have three speaker cards for public comments.
All right. Thank you. So we will allow three minutes per speaker?
Thank you. Can we please have Ralph, followed by Sharon and Melissa?
Good evening. Ralph Hernandez. I want to remind you, I have spoken about the need for sworn police officers. We are greatly undermanned, and it's in violation and not in compliance with the general plan. I'm going to give you a personal thing that came up about four weeks ago or so. My home was invaded by a druggie and a mental reject. I was the fourth resident that was victimized by this person. It just so happens that I was the fourth one that the person came, entered my home, and I caught the person and held the person until the police and fire department and other personnel came. You do not come to my home. You risk your life. I did hold the person. I let the person live. For about 30 years, I have been associated with and a member of an Oriental gang, Oriental clan, related to Bruce Lee and his survivors. In fact, they call me Pop, and they call my wife Mom. This has been for about 30 years. The other clan that I am a member of and a part of is an Asian clan of samurais. I am and have been a senior samurai of that clan. I officiate over new samurais in the sword ceremonies where they are, if they are accepted, subject to my approval also, they are presented with their own sword, and they are samurais. Also, the descendant, one of the big descendants of the founder of that clan, again calls my wife Mom, calls me Dad, Pop. I don't know why they do that, but they do. They are invited to our homes. They have been at my homes for holidays. I am, once in a while, tested as to my abilities, in particular by the Oriental clan during the holidays. You have to understand that criminals are not within a particular border. They could very well come and invade your home and cause your home. I chose to let that person live. If that person had gone any further into my home, you might as well call a meat wagon. So be careful. We need more cops. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have Sharon, followed by Melissa, and then Debbie?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Sharon Sobley-Duell, artistic director and choreographer for Black Diamond Ballet. We are a professional ballet company here in East County, and I wanted to invite all of you to our 13th Annual Nutcracker Performance, December 5th through the 14th, at El Capanel Theater. A little bit about our company. We are a professional ballet company rooted in Pittsburgh, but we have our branches out in Antioch. I began dancing at Delta Ballet Academy right here on the corner of Third and G Street in the 90s, and in 2007, I bought the studio from my owner right out of college. That was a crazy time, but did it. About two more years later, we formed Black Diamond Ballet because there was a need for a professional company here in East Contra Costa County. What makes our company so special is that we highlight professional dancers that are hired throughout the Bay Area, as well as different cultural groups, and about 40 student performers from various studios such as Pittsburgh Performing Arts Academy, the Exceptional Programs, Melody's Dance Studio, Step to This Performing Arts, Deans, California Dance Academy, and many others. In addition to our company, we offer a special sensory-friendly production of the Nutcracker, which is for individuals with autism spectrum disorder, sensitivity disorders, and other special needs, so they can come and enjoy life theater just like everybody else. We hope the community comes out this year. This will be our fifth year at Campanel Theater. We performed in Pittsburgh, but we're here in Antioch. So if you want more information about our Nutcracker, please visit our website, blackdiamondballet.org, or follow us on social media. It's a great holiday tradition, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Can we have Melissa, followed by Debbie?
I'm here to report out on a meeting. I went to the homeless thing last night. It was just like a workshop. It was wonderful. Montserrat is a great leader. I just want to come and say that because it was about 20 women and one man, and she kept us on task. And what I really liked is that I was like one of two citizens, so I have different ideas than the advocates and the people that work directly with the homeless. I felt like I was heard. There was ideas going back and forth, and I'm an idea person, so I just wanted to give kudos to Montserrat and let you guys know that. Thanks. And happy birthday to Andrew Becker, who's not here.
Debbie?
Hi, everybody, mayor, council staff, and residents. I'm Debbie Blazer. I'm the president of the Downtown Antioch Association. Sorry I haven't been here for a while, but we have an event coming up for downtown that we would like to invite all the businesses, and we're partnering with businesses and residents and council as well as staff. We're partnering with APD to clean up the downtown startup beautification project and also a business watch. So we've been working on this with APD in their monthly or bimonthly cleanups, and so we've set a time as November 8th. It's 10 to 12. We start at the Prime Vintage Realty at the end of Second Street there on the entrance of downtown, and we'll end up at the Studio B on G Street. There is a flyer that is online right now that invites everybody as to what the three things that we're trying to accomplish. Set up a regular routine of cleanup, and do a business watch signup, and also a beautification project that we're working with the city. I have to say that there's a number of departments that you must contact. There's not just one person that's downtown that is in charge of lights or cleaning the benches or cleaning the sidewalks. I've talked to four people, and they are going to join us as well in cleaning up downtown. So we'd like all of you watching and all of you in the room to join us on November 8th at 10 o'clock at Prime Vintage Realty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have no further speaker cards.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to announcements of civic and community events. Antioch Police Department Halloween.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public. I'm here today to invite everybody out to the PD's annual Halloween event. We hold it on a yearly basis. I know we've missed a few years, but we're back doing it again. It's a great event for the community. We have a huge haunted house. That's probably one of the best around. Our sworn staff and our civilian staff donate a lot of hours and volunteer their time to put this together. So just want to put out there to the community to show up and get out there. We love to have you out. We'll have some demonstrations by our K-9 officers, some of our drone operators, our traffic officers, as well as our SWAT team. So it's a great opportunity to get to know the officers and the officers to get to know the community. So we have plenty of candy. We're always looking for some more candy. So if you have the opportunity to come by the PD and donate some candy, we can definitely use it. I put some flyers near the interest stores. I also have a Venmo link in case you'd like to donate some money to candy. And we're also hosting this event with our animal services division, and there's opportunity to donate, or to, excuse me, to adopt pets at the event as well. So once again, please come out. We usually get 100 to 1,000 residents in attendance, so it's a great event and look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Captain Bittner?
Three to six. Yes, sir. About that.
Can I ask you another quick question?
Yes, sir.
So the monthly neighborhood cleanup, Mrs. Blazer said that there's one on the 8th. Is that the same as the monthly cleanup? Is that coordinated, the same one that we, the police department leads?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, we'll be there in full force and look forward to having a big group that day.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dia de los Muertos.
All right. You said it better than I can say it. Hey, you said it great. All right. I'm just jump right into it. Good evening, mayor and council. This Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, we're going to have our Fourth Annual Day of the Dead. I'm going to try to say it. Dia de los Muertos event at the Nick Rodriguez Center. It's going to be inside and outside. We are still taking people, businesses that want to do an altar inside of the building. We're going to have food trucks. We're going to have a banda. We're going to have all the historical, traditional performances. It's going to be a great time, so please come out if you're available from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. All right. And to help me with the next one, I'm going to ask Mr. JR Wilson to come up here and help me with the next event.
Thank you, sir. The Animal Veterans Day event will be November 11th, held at the Antioch Veterans Memorial, and that's at the Antioch Marina. But we'd like to thank the Antioch City, in the Antioch City Council, and Parks and Recreation, because it's a great partnership that Delta Veterans Group has with all of you. As I look up there, I see the city council that has connected in each one of their individual ways with the veterans community, so thank you very much. Louis, Greg is, we're honored to have him as part of our family as well, so thank you very much. We want to invite all of you and those that are watching on TV and everybody behind me to go ahead and attend that event. It starts at 8:00 with a pancake breakfast, and that's put on by the Antioch Rivertown Veterans Club, and that's again at the Antioch Marina. And then the ceremony starts at, I have 09:30. That just means 9:30 AM. All right. We have great speakers. We will have Representative Josh Harder coming out to address our citizens here in Antioch, as well as Sergeant First Class McGee. And Sergeant First Class McGee is a United States Army veteran, but he also runs the Junior ROTC program here at Deer Valley High School. We also have a surprise you speaker. I say surprise because I'm kind of excited about this kid coming to speak, but I want him to have his own thunder, so he will do that. Also, we also, every year, we announce the Antioch Veteran of the Year, as well as Lifetime Veteran of the Year. Would anybody like to know who that is? Yeah? Well, you're going to have to go to the event to get that, right? But we also have a couple new awards that we are going to be announcing, and that is the Veteran Supporter of the Year, and we have a business class, and we have a club class, and we have a nonprofit class. So that's something new that we are bringing to that ceremony. Of course, we'll have the Antioch High School and Deer Valley bands out there playing the theme songs for the different branches. It was kind of funny. Email today, they asked what's the theme or the song, the branch song for the Space Force. I had to be honest. I did not know, so I looked up Star Trek. So, but we will work that out and get that squared away as well. They always do a great job anyway. And so as you see the veterans stand up for their different branches and the pride and the honor that they have in their service. We have an 11 o'clock parade, and of course, you can go to deltaveteransgroup.org and get the application if you want to be in the parade. We would love to see too many floats. That's what we kind of always hope for for the parade for Veterans Day, is to have that kind of a problem. Where how are we going to have too many floats, right? So please, please join us for that. It's a great thing. We go all the way from the Veterans Memorial down L Street, make a turn on Second Street, go all the way through historical downtown Antioch. We stop and we pause at the El Capanel at 11:11, and that's where all of the veterans, either that they're in the parade or in the audience, will then salute as the El Capanel rings the bell 11 times, signifying the beginning of the armistice for World War I. And that's kind of a tradition that we like to do here in this city of Antioch. Then we turn down G Street, go to Third Street, come all the way back. It's a wonderful event. Again, everybody is welcome. It doesn't cost you anything, right? The veterans already paid the price. So come out and enjoy us, and if you want to be in the parade, just go ahead and get an application and email it to us. We normally have Velma here. She was supposed to talk about the parade, so she'd be like, you know, totally going crazy, but we miss her. So anyway, thank you very much.
Well done.
Thanks.
Well done. Thank you. All right. And lastly, but not least, we have the Contra Loma Estates Ripping Cutting. That's going to be November 15th. I know it's been a long time coming, but this park was designed by the community for the community, and we look forward to having that on November 15th from noon to 2:00 PM. We're going to have local vendors. We have a DJ. We have some raffle prizes. We're going to have food for like the first 100 people that come up. Enjoy it. We have dignitaries, city council members there. It's going to be a really good time, and we look forward to opening this park for the community and many more after that. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you, Director Wright. Are there any public comments for this item?
We have no public comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number two, announcements of board and commission openings.
Thank you. The Antioch Police Oversight Commission has two full-term vacancies which expire November 2028. The Board of Administrative Appeals has two full-term vacancies expiring March of 2028 and one alternate vacancy expiring December 2025. The Parks and Recreation Commission has one partial term vacancy expiring March of 2028 and one alternate vacancy expiring April of 2026. The deadline to apply for these is 5:00 PM on Friday, October 31st. And the Contra Costa County Library Commission has one full-term vacancy expiring June of 2029. The deadline for that is 5:00 PM on Friday, November 21st. Please fill out applications online at the city's website, or you can email them to the clerk's office, or drop off an application in the water billing drop-off box just outside of Antioch City Hall. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to council committee reports and communications. Councilmember Freitas. All right. Councilmember Wilson?
None of my committees met, but Delta Diablo meets tomorrow.
All right. Mayor Protem Rocha?
Standing Committee for the Schools, Antioch Unified School District and the City of Antioch, we met on the 20th, and one of the things that you might see being sent to you either on the websites, or if you see them when you go to your children's events at the schools, the city's also going to be working to get the survey out that is we're trying to receive responses from our community on some of the issues you'd like to see us address in a partnership between the city and schools to try to do our best to improve the quality of education and the safety of our community as well. So there's a survey that you can see on the website for the City of Antioch and with the school district, and at events that you go to, you might see a barcode that asks you for your input on. It's being titled as Whole Child, Whole Community. What can we do together to best serve our community from children to our seniors? And so that's the survey that's active now, and hopefully if you see it, if you'd like to go online, and we're interested in gathering your input so we can work together to try to develop a plan.
All right. Thank you very much. The Contra Costa Transportation Authority, CCTA, board met last week. They approved, or we approved, the fiscal year 2025, '26 Clean Air TFCA Projects Awards, which included $213,000 for East Contra Costa County. The Transplan Committee met in a special meeting the night after and recommended that $213,000 be dedicated towards Tri Delta's Try My Ride, which serves about 10,000 riders per month and has been a very successful program in the transit area around Antioch. Actually, Councilmember Wilson was instrumental in getting that started, I believe, when she was on the board over there. So we're definitely trying to protect our funds that are being allocated to us and make sure that they're being invested in things that are impacting, positively impacting our community. As far as my mayor's comments tonight, I've been able As far as my mayor's comments tonight, I've been able to attend a lot of events recently, as I'm sure a lot of the city council may have. And there's some wonderful nonprofits, wonderful organizations that are just doing great work here in the City of Antioch and all around. And what, some of them have involved other mayors from other cities around us, whether it's Brentwood, Oakley, Pittsburgh. And I just want to let everybody in this room know that we have a lot of challenges locally. We have a lot of challenges in our state and federal government, and I think lots of times we think Antioch's the only place that is challenged. But we have a lot of great partners in East Contra Costa County and frankly, in Contra Costa County. And so, I just want to let you all know that we are collaborating together as leaders and making sure that we're working with not just the other government agencies, but with Kaiser, Sutter Delta, nonprofits. I really see a lot of, a lot of us all coming together and working together towards common causes, whether it's the youth, whether it's the elderly, whether it's the underserved in our community, and just making sure that we are doing everything we can as a region, because we're much more effective as a region than we are individually. So, I just wanted to just remind folks that in spite of things that we all see locally and things that we see coming at us that are gonna be challenging in the months and ahead of us, we are working together and together, we, sticking together, I think we're gonna end up with a lot of better results. So, I just wanted to say that. Are there any public comments on this item number two?
We have no further comments.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to presentations, our first presentation is BART's role in the region. This is presented by District Two President of the BART Board, Mark Foley, who is also an Antioch resident and just a good man. And so, I'm interested in hearing what you are about to tell us about how BART is impacting our region.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Good evening. I am Mark Foley, and I am a twenty-two-plus Antioch city resident and homeowner. But I also represent District Two for the BART Board of Directors. This year, I'm serving as BART President. So, if you can go to the next slide. Oh, you do? Oh, well, then I'll take it quicker.
Mr. Foley always has his running shoes on so he can get out of here quickly if it goes sideways, so.
You got that right. All right. So, as a representative for District Two, basically from the end of Eastern Contra Costa County all the way out to Concord and Martinez is my sort of realm of responsibility. I'm one of nine elected directors. We have three from Contra Costa, three from Alameda, and three from San Francisco. So, let's talk a little bit about bringing back riders. So, we're really focused on trying to improve the rider experience at BART, really focusing on cleanliness, safety, and service. Some of the recent enhancements that you may have seen, tap and ride. You no longer need your Clipper card to ride on BART. You can take a debit card or a credit card, your mobile wallet, whatever it is, tap in, tap out. We were the first agency in the Bay Area to adopt this. As of December tenth, it is rolling out to the remaining agencies in the Bay Area, and it'll be a phased approach over the next, I don't know, probably two or three months. But folks eventually will all be transitioned over to a new system that allows them to use tap and ride and part of Clipper two point oh, which will be rolling out as well. Just to let you know, in the five weeks that we've rolled out tap and ride, it's already eight percent of our ridership. So, folks are immediately adopting this. This is great for travelers coming into SFO or Oakland who don't want to have to buy a special card. They can just tap in and join the system. We've doubled the rate of cleaning that we're doing on our trains to ensure that they are as clean as possible, and we are opening underground restrooms. And when we do that, we're actually adding restroom attendance, as well as, as we're rehabilitating elevators, adding elevator attendance to our underground stations. And these investments are proving to be good, if you will. We are at a ten-year high in rider satisfaction, with eighty percent of those folks being surveyed saying they'd recommend BART to a friend, a family member, a neighbor. But that's the clean side. What about the safe side? So, we heard clearly that visible public presence and safety on BART was critical. So, part of the Safe and Clean Plan that we launched in September of twenty twenty-three, BART Police employed a new deployment strategy, doubled the number of BART Police Officers on trains and in stations. We increased the number of our Crisis Intervention Specialists, which is part of our Progressive Policing Bureau. Those are the folks that go out first when there's a welfare check call in our system. Also, our Transit Ambassadors and our Fair Inspectors. Additionally, as you might have heard, we have replaced all seven hundred and seventy-one faregates. Every station, all fifty, now have taller, sturdier, easier-to-maintain faregates. Phase one was putting them in, and folks are saying they're seeing less fare evasion by thirty-two percent. So, we're seeing a drop in what people are seeing in the system. Phase two of the BART faregates is to work on the closing time. So, we have sensors. We're trying to fine-tune that to get rid of the folks that might be piggybacking. Crime is down seventeen percent from twenty twenty-four, and violent crime has gone down from two hundred and three incidents in the first month of twenty-four, down to only a hundred and thirty this year. So, we are doing a fantastic job in lowering our crime. Also, nineteen percent delay, nineteen percent less delays caused by police activity. So, the fact that you have to stop a train because of an issue, that is down considerably this year as well. So, we know we're moving in the right, excuse me, right direction. But you have to ensure everyone has access to BART. When you add faregates, folks that need the system most sometimes aren't able to pay. So, over the years, the BART rider, the average, was me, right? Middle-aged, middle-class, white male, privileged enough to own a car, own a home. That has changed. Really, it is now a lower income. Almost fifty percent of those riders don't own a vehicle, and they're non-white. So, we really have changed the dynamic of who rides our system. So, we try to offer a series of discount programs for folks. We have our youth discounts, senior discounts, individuals that are disabled. But we started doing Clipper Smart, which is a low-income pass for folks. So, we're actually offering discounts for individuals that are two hundred percent or less of the poverty level. We also have a program called Bay Pass, and this is an employer-driven program that allows the employer to purchase a pass for their employees, and they can travel on any transit system in the Bay Area any time of day, any day of the week, for free. So, the employer really is helping to encourage getting folks out there. We've also partnered with San Jose State, Sacramento, SF State, and U. C. Berkeley. So, we have forty-five thousand students at U. C. Berkeley that now use Bay Pass, twenty-three thousand students at SF State that now use Bay Pass, as well as employers like U. C. S. F. So, we're really trying to do what we can to lean into making it affordable for those that can't really afford transit in some cases. But that comes at a cost. So, people have a choice on how they're gonna travel throughout the Bay Area, but not whether they will take BART. They may decide to not take BART for whatever reason, and we want to be able to be there when they decide and choose to return to BART. We have a very unique combination of ridership here in the Bay Area and employers with tech, finance, and a number of other agencies. We have the highest remote work in the nation. And so, those are the same folks that aren't taking BART to the office as often as they used to. In fact, our ridership data really mirrors occupancy of businesses in San Francisco and Oakland. What we did see is that seventy-six percent of our riders are back on BART. They're using their Clipper cards. We can see that we've got that. Three-quarters of our riders are back. They're only taking BART a few days a week, and that's the big difference. We're still at around fifty percent ridership, so it creates significant impacts on our operational budget. We're looking at deficits of between three hundred and fifty and four hundred million dollars a year for our operational expenses. So, we have to find a way to change the model that has been working for fifty years, but is no longer viable. Let me hop to the next slide here. So, when we talk about that, I just want to talk about the impacts of BART on our local roadways. So, what would a world without BART kind of look like? Most folks who don't take BART don't realize that there's a great benefit for those that do take BART. If BART riders switched to driving, traffic would increase seventy-three percent on the Bay Bridge and twenty-two percent through the Caldecott Tunnel. And this is based on our Clipper data, exceeding the capacity of both. If half, fifty percent of BART riders shifted to driving, that would increase commute hours by up to six hours per week. If all of our riders shifted, because there was no BART, you're looking at up to twenty hours of additional travel time. Between the Pittsburgh Center, Pittsburgh Bay Point, Antioch stations, four thousand riders per day. Imagine if four thousand more cars were on Highway Four trying to get over the Hill to Concord and get home at the end of the day. So, we're trying to find a way to work through this, but there's no easy way to cut service. During the pandemic, we reduced service forty percent. That only saved twelve percent of the budget. You really can't cut your way out of reducing service. So, we have to look at a different way to do business. In the short term, and when I say short term, I'm saying fourteen years, Senate Bill sixty-three, the Connect Bay Area Act, allows us to find a path potentially to at least some short-term operating revenue. This would be a measure in five counties, Contra Costa, Alameda, San Francisco, Santa Clara, and San Mateo. It's a fourteen-year tax measure that would increase sales tax half a cent on Alameda, Contra Costa, San Francisco, and San Mateo, or San Mateo and Santa Clara. San Francisco is gonna go to a full cent, because they need support for muni as well. And a number of large operators obviously are on board to support this. There's also language in there that ensures that our feeders, like Tri Delta Transit, County Connection, have guaranteed money coming out of this measure. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about our backyard, the Antioch BART Station. So, it is a very large site with obviously solar panels over a large section of our parking lots, which are leased through twenty thirty-eight, and transmission wires that cross over part of that area. So, we've got about twenty-seven developable acres over those two parcels, again, assuming the removal of the solar panels and the transmission wires. To develop that site, zoning would need to be updated to meet the BART standards. And our TOD plan, our Transit-Arented Development Plan earmarks Antioch as a potential site for future housing, but it's earmarked for the year twenty thirty-four and beyond. So, it's not a short-term project, if you will, that we're focused on at this point. But we are more than happy to meet with staff and to look at opportunities if you want to bring this to fruition sooner than twenty thirty-four. And with that, I will say thank you this evening for having me, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Freitas.
So, you may know that we are now undertaking the general plan. And one of the suggestions from the council is to have meetings with elected and appointed officials and some of the special districts that we have. So, I think, you know, that we would definitely like to begin that process with both the elected and appointed officials as the general plan begins to start up. So, the other thing, my wife and I actually use BART quite often.
Thank you.
One of the concerns we have is, especially when you're leaving San Francisco at ten thirty and coming home, it gets very sketchy. And I have to tell you, in the last six months of the year, we have never seen an officer on a train past eight o'clock. And I think frankly, that is part of the problem of people using BART, because they don't feel safe, particularly at night. And so, while I read that you've doubled the number of police officers in stations, we probably use BART, I don't know, four, six times a month or more, and we just never see officers on the train. So, one of our suggestions is, I don't know where they're at, but they're not on the yellow line.
Well, yesterday I took BART to work, and I saw two different officers on my ride. So, I can say that they are in fact deployed. I honestly, before we changed this plan, I only saw an officer three or four times in the twenty-eight years that I was actually commuting, when there wasn't an issue. Just, so I hear where you're coming from, but I will honestly tell you that we have changed the deployment over the last two-plus years to ensure that we've got equality across not only the time of day, but the beat, if you will, for the officers. They're responsible for three to four stations each, and so they go back and forth between, say, Antioch to North Concord and back. So, and part of the contract was getting them out of their vehicles. So, I will say that they honestly are, but hopefully.
I just, I think to increase ridership.
Sure.
A main issue is safety.
Yes.
And you need to communicate to the audience, and proof is in the pudding.
Got it. Well, do you have any officers that we could have?
Pardon?
Do you have any officers that we could have? Yeah, see, that's, that is the challenge. That is the challenge. That is a challenge.
It is a challenge. I'm just simply saying, particularly at night.
Yes, I hear you.
It's very, very dangerous, or perceived as dangerous.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you for your report. I did have a question. You talked about, I think you said, U. C. Berkeley. There were two other colleges you spoke about in regards to.
Yes.
The specialized fairs.
Yes, the Bay Pass program.
The Bay Pass.
Correct.
Are you working with, is BART working, not used specifically, is BART working with other like community colleges throughout the Bay Area, you know, seeing that we have three sites here in Contra Costa County, working with those students? Because a lot of students that may go have a class or two at Los Madanos may have another class at D. V. C. or Contra Costa.
Right.
I think that'd be a good pool of people to tap into.
I do not know specifically what colleges locally, community-wise, we've checked in with, but I'll find out and let you know. We piloted it with SF, SF State, San Jose State, and U. C. Berkeley. And San Jose, I'm sorry, and SF State and U. C. Berkeley decided to purchase the passes. San Jose State is still debating if they want to do that. We have done community colleges a little further north, but I don't know that we're doing anything with Contra Costa College. I will, I will find out and let you know. But I would love that. We also, we also are trying to look into events like Dreamforce and Tech Crunch that's in town to try to partner with those sort of organizations. When they bring in five to ten thousand visitors, why not use a Bay Pass or something similar to encourage people to come out to Black Diamond Mines and walk, or to do other things in the region?
And if you guys ever think about getting express train to SFO, that'd be great.
I hear you. Thank you.
I just echo Councilmember Wilson's comments. I know, you know, Councilmember Freitas and I both sit with Tri Delta Board, and they've done some similar projects where they've had passes for students, especially over the summer. And it was pretty impressive, the participation of our youth during the summer session that they made these passes available. I mean, it was like doubled or tripled from the previous year. My twin sons went to San Jose State, so I remember back in years ago, them riding the system and how convenient it was. So, I do think when you have Los Madanos College here in Pittsburgh, Diablo Valley College, Pleasant Hill, and West Contra in Richmond, that there is probably a demand or a population of young adults, college budgets that are on a tight budget that could benefit for such a pass at the community college level. So, I would echo your sentiment to that. I do think that those populations of students are, you know, a lot of students can't afford to go to the University of California system out of high school or to the C. S. U. system. I was a principal for quite a long time. So, many of our youth choose to go to the community college system. And so, you know, not everybody has a car, you know, depending on bus, transit. But there are youth who are going from, you know, from where we're at here and go out to, go out to City College of San Francisco, or going out to Laney, or, you know, so there are students that are riding all over the place. So, I think that that should be a part of the conversation to consider moving forward. I think it would benefit them as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation, President Foley. The question I have is related to Senate Bill sixty-three. That's kind of the elephant in the room, right? Because if that doesn't pass next November, then. Because if that doesn't pass next November, then all the transportations in the world are hurt, not just, not just BART, but Tri Delta, AC Transit, everybody. What's the, are you looking forward to the possibility of that not, you know? In the Antioch case, we're at nine and three-quarter percent. That pushes to ten and a quarter percent sales tax. And so, you know, I think folks are pretty taxed out if we were to poll them. So, what, can you share, maybe share a little about what BART's thoughts are if that doesn't pass?
Sure. So, part of what we asked our general manager to do was come back to us with a Plan B budget, if you will. What does the world look like when you can't afford your full operational strategy? So, next month, November thirteenth, we are having our budget workshop. So, we'll certainly get more information. But the reality is, as with, I'm sure the city as well, the lion's share of your budget is labor. And so, what this means is your constituents, my constituents, being laid off. That's the reality of not potentially having revenue. That's one thing we have to look at. Another thing would be station closures, elimination of specific lines. We have some duplication when we run out of different areas. We might need to reduce those. The other thing you would look at is reduced hours. Beginning of COVID, we were basically open from six AM to nine PM. Maybe that's what it looks like going forward. Maybe you're not available weekends anymore. So, we would have to take a really hard look at what do we do to save revenue, but be able to put forward a product that leans into when people are taking the system, which honestly, the lion's share of ridership is, you know, five in the morning until about eight-thirty in the morning, and then three in the afternoon until about seven at night. That's core ridership for folks that take it to other, you know, work, really. So, I, it's not pretty. But we are looking at what those sort of funding models would look like.
Sure. Councilmember Freitas?
Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, as Mayor Protem said, he and I both serve on Tri Delta. And last Wednesday, Assemblywoman Lori Wilson made a presentation to the BART Board of Directors. And the question you asked was asked by me. And frankly, there is not a Plan B at this particular time. And so, all energy and effort is going to be trying to have the passage of Proposition sixty-three, or is that right?
Yeah, SB sixty-three, correct.
But it's a little scary if there's no Plan B. And that's, I'm sure, going to manifest itself when the campaigning actually begins in earnest.
Thank you for that. And then, just the last question. So, homelessness is an issue across the whole Bay Area. And there's all types of theories about how homeless move about the Bay Area. And one of the theories is at the end of the line, homeless will ride the train. And then, at the end of the line, at the end of the day, they'll get off the train. Do you have any statistics or any sort of information whether that's true or not? And I believe BART has a core team that you have that work with BART and work with the county and the cities. Can you maybe talk a little bit about homelessness as it relates to BART?
Sure. So, just so that you know, we actually coordinate with three different agencies, one in Alameda, one in Contra Costa, and one in San Francisco County for the sort of transitional services for people that are unhoused or having really substance abuse issues or having the worst day of their life, and they're on BART. So, we do have the core team. Essentially, they work towards the end of the evening so that when the train arrives at the Pittsburgh Bay Point Station, that is generally where folks are exiting the trains. We don't see that at the Antioch Station as much as we did at the Pittsburgh Bay Point Station. Part of that is proximity to one of the two warming shelters and beds that we have in the county, which is off of Highway Four in Concord. So, I mean, and part of our approach was the Progressive Policing Bureau. Don't send an officer out when you can send someone who has training in crisis intervention and can try to connect people with services. So, and I will say that the fare gates honestly are helping in a way because folks that aren't entering the system without, you know, paying their fares are not entering the system anymore. I don't know that that's the right answer or a good answer, but the numbers have decreased what we're seeing in the system. But the reality is, the globe has a problem with homelessness. The state has a problem. The county has, everyone is trying to come up with a solution. And our piece is helping, but it really isn't the solution.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Any other questions? Don't see any. Thank you, President Foley, for your presentation. I really appreciate it. And maybe after the first of the year, when we have a little more information about Prop sixty-three and how things are going, you can come back and give us an update.
I'm just down the street. Just let me know.
All right. Thank you so much.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No public comments.
All right, perfect. So, moving on to the next presentation. This is Public Safety Cameras Update by Lieutenant Bill Whitaker. Thank you, Lieutenant, for updating us on this.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Counsel. My name is Bill Whitaker. I'm a lieutenant with the Police Department in charge of the Investigations Bureau. I'm going to give you a quick rundown of our current video surveillance systems and ALPRs. Currently, the city has and maintains one hundred and eighty-five cameras. Sixty-six of those are the police facility animal services. Twenty-two are from City Hall. Nineteen are from the Marina. The community center houses sixteen. Nick Rodriguez has three. Pru Water Park, the main building, has nine. The concession stand has four, and the snack bar has two. The RV storage lot has a total of nine cameras. Water Treatment Plant A has eight cameras. Water Treatment Plant B and the poly room have seven cameras. Water Treatment Plant RO Building has nine cameras. Water Treatment Plant River Pump Station has seven cameras. And the River Pump PTZ from the water treatment plant has four. So, that equals the one hundred and eighty-five, all maintained by the city. Those do come from separate budgets. And then, as far as the automated license plate readers, we currently have thirteen Flock cameras. Those are new to us in the last six months. We have a total of twenty-nine vigilant cameras. Seven of those are offline, meaning they do not currently work. We have tried to reset and reuse them, and they have expired. So, they're still up. They will be removed. And twenty-two of those are active and working. Currently, all of our video surveillance and ALPRs are not shared out of state and not shared with any federal agency whatsoever. So, we do not share those, only in-state agencies. If there's an investigation or believed crime, we would share those cameras with them. Also, the chief wanted me to touch on inquiry you guys made about red light and speed cameras. Currently, we do not have any of those. Those would be on a completely different budget, somewhere under the traffic realm. And he has a presentation ready, if needed, that Sergeant Green could present to you guys. And I am happy to answer any questions that you all have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council? No. Is, are there plans to increase the number of cameras? City-owned cameras and then also these twenty-nine vigilant cameras that aren't working? Replace them, or what's the plan going forward as far as?
So, currently, out of the one hundred and eighty-five cameras that we have citywide, those are on four different systems. So, that we've obviously found a need to go to one system, one lens. So, all the departments can use them, and then we can, we can have different permissions and securities and measures like that. So, we would like to put all those into one system as well as increase. Obviously, it's better for the community if there's more eyes. San Diego Gaslight District is a perfect example of that. They have so many cameras, audio, video down there. It helps them solve crime. It keeps the public safe. So, yet, the answer to that is yes. We'd always like to increase them. As far as the vigilant ALPRs, like I said, twenty-two of the twenty-nine are working. The other seven are offline. We will slowly replace the vigilant cameras as they go down with the Flock cameras. But we also have budgetary constraints with that as well. So, the seven that are currently down that will not, that they're basically dead cameras, those will be replaced with Flock cameras, which is the new system that we're going with. It's more cost-effective and also reads or looks, finds cars not just with license plates, but without. So, it's a huge benefit for investigations.
And then, the ALPR, that stands for?
Automated License Plate Reader.
Okay. And are those the cameras that are on the, at the intersections?
They are at intersections, yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know how many intersections we have, we have cameras by chance?
I would have to do a rough estimate in my head, but I would say eight to ten.
Okay. And are we looking to expand that, that program as well as other hotspots, intersections?
Yes, sir. And Axon has actually come up with something that Flock is doing as well. So, that's, it is a little bit cheaper than Flock is offering it, and we're already within a contract of Axon. So, it might be something we can add on as well.
And then, as we're, as we're doing new developments in Antioch, I think I heard that one new development, or maybe more, have Flock cameras in their developments and their, the maintenance of those and the operations funded through maybe Landscaping and Lighting or CFD or something. Is that something that the Police Department's involved in, the conditions of approval?
We typically get notice from Flock. Those are private cameras, typically paid for by either Homeowners Association or one of the other funds there. They're privately-run cameras, so we don't have any interaction with them, though we can, if given permission, see the hits and the plates from those cameras.
So, would there be a benefit as new development occurs to make that a condition of approval for the development to install those cameras?
That is an exceptional idea for all points of entrance and egress.
Okay, so...
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Yeah, we'd like to have staff look into, look into that requirement on new development to, in cooperation with Police Department and developer, to locate those cameras in the appropriate locations and then make them accessible, obviously, to the Police Department to be able to access those.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah.
You had mentioned about the red light cameras system. I'd be interested in learning more about the pros and cons to that. I mean, one of the things that I hear and I experience myself is when I come to stoplights anywhere in town, I always pause before I move forward when it turns green because you never know a vehicle trying to get through to one side or the other, and they frequently run through red lights. And I've avoided a few accidents by being cautious and waiting. And so, to me, if that would be a deterrent, I would think. But I don't know the cost. I don't know if it's effective. I'd like to know more information. I think you said, you said Officer Green or someone from the department?
Yes, Sergeant Green will have, can have a presentation if you guys desire.
I would, I would like to ask.
Red light cameras have been around for a long time. They're very effective. It does generate money, but there's also a cost on the front end of that.
Yeah, I just want to know if it's cost-effective, you know how that works. But it's just that, for, it's just a safety issue. I'm sure people in the audience and watching on YouTube have experienced what I just described, which is being extremely concerned when you come to an intersection not knowing if people are going to follow the light signals or if they're going to run right through it and potentially cause some harm to someone.
Yes. And the speed cameras, it's a new bill that just passed, so they're relatively new. But I'm sure we can get research and statistics on that as well.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Any public comment on this item?
We have no comments on this agenda item.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Lieutenant. All right. Moving on to item number four, Consent Calendar. Do we have any items that are to be pulled by the staff, by the council, or public?
As noted by reported the dice, item H is being pulled, and we'll move to a future meeting.
Okay. Item H. Any other, any other items?
No.
All right. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar except for item H?
Move to approve with exception to item H.
A motion of second?
Second.
Motion of a second. Please cast your votes.
Does this come up yet? Oh, there it is.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Item number H, purchase of twenty-three, twenty-two six replacement vehicles and six new to fleet, acting city manager merchant?
Yes. When we were reviewing the report in final, based on some questions you had sent, we realized there was just a mathematical error for the costing of the new purchased vehicles. So, we're correcting that report, and that'll be brought back on the next council agenda item.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from, yes, Councilmember Freitas?
I do, actually, on two of them. In the fiscal impacts, particularly when we're taking money out of a particular fund, it would be helpful to know how much remains in that particular fund. I know we have requested this in the past, and I would like to request again. The other part that I did not understand, replacement vehicles and six hundred thousand dollars on the Public Works Development Impact Fee Fund. That struck me as odd that we're taking money out of there, and I wonder, it's legal for us to do so. And I would like to have City Attorney's Office to please inform us of the legality of actually taking money out of that particular fund for vehicles.
Yes. I will let Kevin Wayne, I can tell you that from the impact study that was done, Public Works vehicle purchases, new purchases, not replaces existing, is built into the Development Impact Fee Study to increase capacity serving new development. And we do have to spend those funds. Otherwise, if we don't spend down those funds, we're essentially, could potentially have to refund those funds if we're not spending them. So, Public Works vehicles is unauthorized use. We did get direction from the City Attorney's Office to make sure any of our Development Impact Fee Funds, as you see. So, we did budget seven hundred thousand dollars in the current fiscal year for the purchase of Public Works vehicles. As you see from the reporting, though it's being pulled, the estimate for these new vehicles is six hundred thousand, so it's under that usage. And we're not taking that from the enterprise funds because this is an allowable use of the Development Impact Fee Funds. And then, it relieves the burden of the enterprise fund having to pay for those vehicles.
So, did I hear you correctly? We can use the impact fee for replacement?
No, 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 for new, new. That's why we're only, the six new purchases are...
Are new.
Correct. And none of the replacement vehicles.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other comments on that? All right. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to continue item H to the next city council meeting, which would be on November the fourth?
Move approval?
I have a motion of a second?
A second.
A motion of a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, excellent. Moving on to our public hearing. Item number five is the Slatton Ranch Townhome Project. So, items number five and six are continued public hearings. Mr. Clerk, I'll have you before the item number seven, read about the rules for the public hearing. That'd be fine. So, item number five, Slatton Ranch Townhome Project, continued from the September twenty-third city council meeting, acting city manager merchant?
I just want to make sure it's clear for everyone that the normal public hearing rules, because the public hearing was already opened and closed at the last time this was heard. So, there will, there would be no more opponent-proponent phase of the hearing. It's also, because this is kind of a continuation, and there was the extended public comment period, the five-minute comment period last time. Today would just have to be a three-minute period for comments based off of the new, well, not the new item, but the, I guess, the renewed item that's before the council today.
Understood. Thank you. So, it will not be a public hearing. There'll be three minutes for anybody that wants to make public comment. All right. Thank you.
Yes. And as you mentioned, this is a continuation from the September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five council meeting. Zoe Meredith, our Planning Manager, will provide a brief staff report before Ms. Foley.
Yeah. Good evening, Maran councilmembers. As was stated, this item was heard on the September twenty-third meeting, and I'm just going to provide a brief reminder. The project is located between Slatton Ranch Road and Empire Avenue and to the north of Wicklow Way. The project site is a housing element site, and the project meets the general planned zoning and objective city standards. The proposed project consists of one hundred and twenty-nine townhome units and seventeen buildings. The required approvals are a vesting tentative subdivision map and design review for the proposed architecture and landscaping. At the September 23rd City Council Meeting, the City Council held a public hearing, took public comment, and discussed the project. The council voted to continue the item. Staff prepared additional information in the staff report related to state housing law. So the action tonight is that staff recommends the council adopt the resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map and design review, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have five speaker cards. Can we please have Ralph Hernandez, followed by Jason Lester, and Alora McGuire?
Now, just a question, are we talking about five minutes, or just three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I'm opposed to, to it. This just adds more and more responsibility for law enforcement, and as I've stated over and over, we don't have enough officers, you are way below the sworn officers that you are required, according to the general plan. It is not consistent with the general plan. I understand that you're doing a CFD, but you know what? You've got a lot of CFDs that occur, and this just happens to be another one. There's no explanation as to exactly how much is going to be charged. Historically, Antioch has let the developers basically take from the city and gain a tremendous amount of money. It's short-term, CFDs are supposed to be long-term, Antioch's have not been. Actually, Antioch has been a Santa Claus to the developers. We have provided welfare to the developers. You are failing to maintain, such as your police personnel, maintain the level of, that the general, the general plan requires. 1.2 per thousand residents minimum, up to 1.5 under your Section 3 and Section 8 of the general plan. It's not there. You don't have enough law enforcement. That puts further responsibility on our officers. Our officers themselves are, are being stretched even further by adopting these kinds of things. How much money really are you going to have left to provide for this particular development? If they want to develop, have them pay the true cost of maintaining our public safety, in particular, for the life of the project, for the life of when those people are going to be here. As I've stated before, you have a buy-in in other countries, where you have people and projects that have to pay for the life of those projects, or for the citizenship. I emailed Donald some information on that. So, I'm against it, I do not believe that you keep adding more and more to our safety of our community, to the detriment of our community, and to our police personnel. It's not right. Thank you.
Jason Lester, followed by Alora McGuire, and Daniel Globe.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jason Lester, I'm the Assistant Business Manager of UA Local 159 Plumbers and Steamfitters. I'm also here representing, you know, 300 families, also from the Electricians Union, the Sheet Metal Workers, and Sprinkler Fitters Unions. And they're also members of Contra Costa Residents for Responsible Development. We advocate for residential projects that result in a more sustainable and equitable Antioch. We're proud of the work that we do to support policies and projects that will address our housing crisis here in all of Contra Costa County. We're also proud of the work that we do to lessen the environmental impacts of those projects. Of course, as construction workers are exposed to environmental impacts, like air pollution, noise, and hazardous chemicals that we work with, resulting in much higher rate of cancer and respiratory health problems. I was here at the last hearing, and I spoke, where we explicitly, we explicitly did not call for this project to be rejected by you. We did ask for appropriate environmental mitigations, which our attorney has spoken to. You received a letter from the developer's attorney attacking us for standing up for our neighbors and the construction workforce that is full of half-truths and gross misrepresentation of facts. For example, it states that we will file SEQA comments, and then withdraw them if we gain a labor agreement. You will note that no examples were given. The reason for that is it simply doesn't happen. SEQA offers the public opportunities to advocate for safer, more sustainable projects. We appreciated the opportunity to present these concerns to the city, and we appreciate the city's consideration of our comments on this project. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for letting me speak tonight. Have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you.
We have Alora, followed by Daniel and Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Alora McGuire, on behalf of Contra Costa Residents for Responsible Development. Residents is a coalition of individuals and labor organizations with members who live and work in the city of Antioch and surrounding communities. As members of communities where development takes place, the coalition supports sustainable development by encouraging compliance with state and local environmental and land use laws. Residents often participate in the public review and comment process provided by SEQA to protect the communities that they build and live in. Residents is not asking the city to deny the project. The city responded to these, rather, our comments on this project demonstrated the project may result in health impacts from construction-related DPM emissions, increased traffic impacts from VMT, and noise impacts to nearby residences from project construction and operation activities. As a result of our comments, the city added a condition of approval for the project that requires the preparation of a qualitative vehicle miles traveled analysis and physical measures to ensure VMT is reduced. The city responded to these comments and improved the project. However, applicants' councils submitted a letter to the city containing factually and legally inaccurate statements that attack Contra Costa Residents' right to participate in the SEQA and land use process. Today, we submitted a letter that addresses these misstatements, and describes the significant contributions unions and community coalitions have made to SEQA's environmental, health, and safety process. Most importantly, the unions raise serious environmental concerns, and do not walk away from these issues until they are resolved. We appreciate the opportunity to present these concerns to the city, and appreciate the city's consideration of these comments. And if you have any questions, my colleague Christina Caro is here.
And we have Daniel, followed by Melissa.
Good evening, council members. Dan Gollub, I'm counsel for the project applicant. I'll try to address two issues extremely briefly. The first, with respect to the merits of the project approval, we have a letter in the record in which we make clear that, as a housing element site, the project's disapproval is simply not permissible under the record that's before the council. I think we made our points on that in our letter. The county, the city committed to this as being a housing element site, disapproving it would be unlawful, and the Housing Accountability Act poses very high burden on any disapproval of the project. We don't think there's any evidence that could possibly be put together that would make the case for that disapproval, and it doesn't sound like even anyone's contending as much in the public hearing. Disapproval, it's not just disapproval that's unlawful, the law actually makes quite clear that imposing impermissible conditions, or, or disapproving a SEQA exemption for which the project is entitled, would also be equally unlawful under the Housing Accountability Act, which brings me to the question of the environmental review. There's no legitimate issue with respect to the environmental review for this project. It was fully analyzed in the city's housing element EIR, and when that happens, there's a very high burden to establish that you have to do another EIR for a project that was already analyzed. After all, that's the point of doing, the housing element EIR. Here, the city and its experts, and I do want to make sure the record's clear on that, the applicants required to reimburse the city for its costs of experts, but the experts report specifically to the city, that the city's experts have carefully confirmed that there's no peculiar issues with respect to this project or the next one that weren't analyzed in the EIR. The city is entirely justified in relying on its experts instead of the ones that have been paid by the project opponents to try to delay the project. In the 30 days that the project opponents have had to try to put together something in response to our last round, they've come up with almost nothing, except for a few minor points on the acoustical analysis, and the critical issue is they don't address the fundamental problem with all of their experts' analysis, which we pointed out, which is it's not based on an understanding of the project the applicant is actually intending to build. Appears to be best on speculation, or ideas about what they think we're proposing to build, what the construction schedule is, and likewise. To show that further SEQA review is even permissible, to say the nothing of compulsory, they would have to show there is very peculiar aspects of this project that differentiates it from what you studied in the EIR, and the kind of boilerplate assertions which they make repeatedly with respect to most of their challenges, if not all of their challenges, can't show anything peculiar, it's the same old, same old. There's nothing about building a residential subdivision at this location that will create peculiar impacts on the environment. It's a very standard subdivision, and I have to say, we haven't been told about imposing new mitigation measures or conditions of approval. We've been told to do a full new EIR, that's plainly unlawful, would violate the HA, among other laws, and we'd encourage you to go with your staff's recommendation to approve the SEQA exemption.
Thank you. Melissa?
I'm not here to talk about SEQA, or anything like that. I know you have a fiduciary duty to the city, even though you might want to vote no, you probably aren't tonight, but I always believe in you guys, and you'll do what's best for Antioch. But, let me talk about this builder. I do not believe therefore what's best for Antioch. As you recall, they were charged with bribery, the owners of De Nova, with former council member Mike Borbanica earlier this year. And it makes me wonder, just hypothetically, who else have they bribed but didn't get caught? Who else is in their rolodex of bribery people? Someone in the planning department, someone who signs off quickly? I don't know. I'm just kind of musing to myself when I sleep at night. And let's not forget their last meeting, where it's too bad, so sad, Antioch. It was a true masterclass on how to alienate an entire community through bullying and strong-arming. It's the kind of arrogance that tells you exactly what they think of Antioch, and it's not just, it's just not flattering. They don't respect our citizens, our council, or our community. They respect their bottom line, which, that's fine, but have respect for other things. Now, if you guys do decide to reject their plans for whatever reasons, and De Nova decides to sue you, I personally would love to see that play out in front of a judge. Imagine the spotlight on their ethics under oath. I suspect a little daylight in the courtroom might do wonders for the darkness of their souls. So here you go, De Nova, just saving you a little trip to the ATM for your next bribe.
We have no further comment cards?
All right, thank you very much. This is before the city council for questions or comments. Could you take that cup with you, and you, I mean, check it first, but to get with you before you?
Yeah, there's nothing in there. David Store, if I could just make a comment, Mr. Mayor, if I can, not so much on the SEQA. It's been through your planning commission, through staff, and we, we concur with what you've heard tonight on the SEQA disposition. Relative to the Police Department, I'd like to make a couple of comments, because it kind of tied into an early discussion we had tonight. So the general plan, as you know, was 2003. It's a general plan flying at 30,000 feet, sets policies, ideas, and standards. It doesn't adopt an ordinance or anything related to that. But, in 2014, the city council at that time did adopt Nexus fees. So they did drill down, and not only just police, but general administration, parks, and public works. And within that 2014 study, which we're in the process of updating with Don's help, we're in the process of looking at those services, and trying to figure out what else new development has been doing since the adoption of the 2014 Nexus study. And within that Nexus study, identified where how many police vehicles we need, attributed to new development. So the city has taken a proactive review of police services specifically, and use those service standards from the general plan. So, your council is not acting inconsistent with the general plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Frey, does you have?
Mr. Store, I'm not sure of questions for you, or Ms. Meredith. Talking about this issue, I raised it last time, and I still don't understand it. And so, in the report itself, it states that on page three, second paragraph, therefore, section 15183, consistency memorandum was completed for the proposed project to demonstrate that the project has been adequately analyzed in the previous environmental review under SEQA, and that further evaluation is not required. On page 13, with the traffic impact analysis, the project's contribution to traffic will exceed city standards at the, at the intersection, greater than three-second increase in delay, because it is forecast to have a level of service of F, which is absolutely the worst traffic impact that we can have. Conditions while also meeting Caltrans peak hour warrant for a traffic signal. This intersection would operate at LOS, level of service F, and meet Caltrans peak hour traffic signal warrant. So, the mitigation comes in the second paragraph, the proportionate share to try to handle this level of service F, is they're going to give one-fourth of the cost of a traffic signal. This is Empire Mine Road in Wicklow. It's going to be extraordinarily busy street connecting Oakley, Antioch, and Brentwood. Level F. How does that pass SEQA? I don't get it, because they offer to pay one-fourth of a traffic light? Is that it?
So I can answer that. So in SEQA, the current standard, and what the housing element EIR used, is to use vehicle miles traveled. It's a different standard, previously, SEQA did rely on level of service, but it did switch per state law to vehicle miles traveled. That's what's in the housing element EIR, and that's what is in our consistency memo as well. Separately, the city has, in our general plan, the level of service, so that's why we have the TIA, the Transportation Impact Analysis, and we have guidelines related to that. So that was performed outside of SEQA, and separate, under our guideline requirements, and that's where you're getting those conditions of approval. But SEQA relies on vehicle miles traveled.
So, that being said, we're still going to have a level F. We are going to have gridlock at Empire Mine Road in Wicklow for all eastern Contra Costa County. Those people who live in Brentwood, Oakley, Antioch, and the county unincorporated, correct?
So, yes, but there are the mitigations here that are called out.
A one-fourth contribution to one signal light, that's the mitigation?
Yes, and you can also see further down about turn pockets, so it is mitigated. And this is the, reviewed by our engineering division and the transportation.
Let's read that line. However, the queuing calculations that include the proposed traffic signal indicate the westbound lane, left turn pocket on Wicklow way will exceed its storage by 171 feet. westbound lane left turn pocket on Wicklow way will exceed its storage by 171 feet during the peak hour. So all those cars are simply going to be sitting in the lane, waiting for the signal light to finally give them access onto Wicklow. That's what you're talking about, correct?
Correct. So the next sentence describes how there will be additional left turn storage prior to building permit issuance, and then the construction prior to the occupancy of the first residential unit?
So it'll only get worse once occupancy takes place.
So again, the TIA is looking at ultimate buildout of the, not just the project, but the area.
There were lots of questions, lots of issues that I raised. I'm just curious, during this period of time from the last public hearing to tonight, I mean, one of the biggest issues I have, the ingress and egress of this property, there's only one, and when you come through, you are immediately in front of you, you have a children's playground. And part of it is that I raised as children's services. So I'm just curious, with all the testimony that the applicant heard, did they come and say, you know, maybe the council members, they had some good ideas, maybe we can tweak this or tweak that? Did anything change from the applicant, from all the public testimony that we had before to tonight?
If you're looking at me, no, the project is the same.
The absolute same, even though public testimony, questions about children's safety and the ingress and egress, that's, the kids are exposed. Okay? That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have any other questions?
No, I think, you know, the time from our last meeting with Councilmember Freitas has brought up our issues, concerns, obviously, that led us to pausing and moving this forward to tonight. Clearly, in reviewing SB 330, which is addressing the housing crisis in California that went into effect in 2019, it clearly says that it's intended to streamline housing development by limiting local regulations. So it's very clear that this is a state initiative legislation that went forward to address the housing crisis in California. So the concerns that we brought up about all the issues around traffic, children's safety, all of those things, end up just falling off the table because as long as they've met the guidelines of what's been presented, and talking about CEQA, and that they've met the previous requirements, then there's really nothing else that they need to do. I think what would be nice would be to get a response to try to partner and work with us on how we can better serve our community, but we're not hearing that. We're a general law city, and as a general law city, we must be consistent with California Constitution and legislations that's passed. So we are having to, or being required, to follow the laws that are presented to us by legislation. And in this case, it has to do with the housing crisis that we faced in 2019 that I think this goes out to 2031. So that's where we're at. That's what we had to look at between our last meeting and today to see if there could be any modifications or adjustments to meet some of the concerns that we have. I still would throw that out there and would hope that the applicant would show some consideration to the concerns that we have for our residents, our children, and our families. And so I'll leave that statement as it is. But as far as doing my homework, research, it's very clear what SSB 330 is intended to do. And as far as the local government, we are very limited in what actions we can take. And that's pretty much what we've discovered since our last meeting that brings us here tonight.
Yes, Councilmember Wilson?
Because I was just looking at my notes. Assuming the attorney that's with the developer, did I miss, actually, I have a question for you. Because I think, I'm hoping I misheard you. You had said something in reference to when the gentleman from labor, in reference to not having to care about the working conditions. Did I mishear what you said?
I certainly have, I certainly have no memory of saying that, and if I did, I misspoke.
Okay. You said something in regards to work, and that's kind of, and I'm looking at my notes here that I put like an explanation point. I'm hoping I misheard you, but is that...
So am I.
Okay. So what was your, you made a reference to the builders or the people that are going to be working on your project, their working conditions. I'm really, I want to go back to your reference to that.
I really don't recall raising that. I'm sorry. And I have my notes in front of me.
Okay.
Should I just try to say again?
If you can, if you can find that, you said something, I want to make sure if you said something too quick or you misspoke, because that's really concerning if we're not concerned about working conditions.
I don't think I would have ever said that, and I certainly don't have any notes in front of me that prepared me to say that. I think if I said something to that effect, I must have misspoken. Does anybody, could you help me out anymore? I don't think I mentioned that at all.
No, then...
Ah, maybe I should be, maybe I should be clear, maybe try to say this. The state law is very explicit and clear that to the extent any further CEQA review is permissible of a project that's already been studied in a full EIR, the opponent has to show that there are impacts peculiar to the project that are distinct from a typical project or for the project as it was studied in the EIR. And I think I said that I couldn't, I don't see any reason, and we're not aware of any evidence, and the city's experts aren't aware of any evidence about why this project would pose any of those types of considerations. But I certainly didn't mean to draw a line to suggest that working conditions...
Maybe I misheard that.
Okay.
That's why I thought...
Right.
I heard you say that, but I heard you say something else.
Okay. So, and we reviewed carefully the comments that have been raised by the labor union's attorney. We did our best to look at the very detailed analysis that was provided very, very shortly before this hearing, and of course, didn't have the greatest opportunity to look at all those because it just came in at the very last minute. The point we're making is that the issues that seem to be raised don't seem to relate to any peculiar aspects of this project. It's a very standard residential subdivision, so is the next one on the agenda, in a site that's zoned for exactly this type of development. We're not taking any kind of unusual conditions or construction conditions that should show unusual impacts on workers or anybody else, and we don't think there's any evidence that's been suggested to the contrary. I do want to make sure I'm very clear. I agree with largely what the mayor pro tem said. It's important to be clear that we're required to comply with the city of Antioch's objective standards. So there's a bunch of state law requirements we have to meet. But it's because we've established that we're consistent with all the standards that the city has put in place with respect to its general plan and zoning, that the project is therefore supposed to be approved on the basis of that. So I will admit, councilmember, if I said anything to that effect with respect to that labor conditions aren't a valid consideration, I certainly didn't mean to suggest that at all.
Okay, I hope not. And I just think it's unfortunate you guys didn't take the opportunity to hear everything that was stated in the last time you were here, at least, hey, we made some efforts here, we made some leeway here. I feel like you're just reiterating the letter you sent to us right after the council meeting. It's just unfortunate, it just doesn't feel like, like Ms. Case said, for organizations that's saying that they want to be part of the community, you didn't address any of the community's concerns. And it's also unfortunate that our hands are going to be tied due to this state law that's come down.
Right.
But it just, I wish you would have spent time going, oh, the community said this, this is how we think we can work with this or remedy this.
It's important to note that there's a whole host of conditions of approval on this project that were imposed to go even beyond compliance with existing conditions and standards. We work very closely with the department, planning department, public works, everyone to do our best to understand that. We listen very carefully to the comments before the planning commission, which gave a unanimous recommendation of approval. We haven't been actually asked by the labor opponents to agree to specific conditions of approval, or...
But labor came, but community members also came.
Sure. No, we heard those as well. And it's our view that we thought we had addressed all the objective standards that had been, to the extent there were objective standards, they'd been addressed. It's not, as I said in my letter, it's not at all to suggest that we're not open to continuing to work with the city going forward, and the approval, the entitlement doesn't end that conversation, and it doesn't need to.
Okay, I'll leave my comments there.
Okay.
All right. This is going to be for staff. This is related to my question that I had asked about the improvements on Empire Avenue. Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Store.
Yes, before we get to that, Mr. Mayor, if I can, just address it. It is true that the objective design standards have been met, but what hasn't been discussed is, from your last meeting, is there anything else that the applicant can assist with? And I'd like to give Dana an opportunity to address the council to see if there's something they can do between an approval tonight and issuance of a building permit they're willing to agree to voluntarily, if you will.
Good evening. I'm Dana Sabat. I work with De Nova Homes. We're happy to continue to have a conversation with all of the staff members. This project was submitted more than two years ago. We've gone through two years of detailed analysis with staff. So the plans and the engineering and the comments that have been received over the last couple of years have been incorporated intentionally and with good thought. But if there are other concerns, we've spent a couple of years working to get this project to the point where we think it's something that will work well within the community, and we're happy to continue to have those discussions. So when we build something, I mean, we're in partnership with the city for a good long time after that. Our residents are living there, they're calling us. So we're not, we're not opposed to having further discussion. That said, we are limited by the city's objective standards. So if we have to put in roads that are X feet wide and setbacks that are X feet wide, and we have to have X number of square feet of parks, it is a little bit like playing Tetris. I just aged myself there with reference to Tetris. But it is like playing Tetris, to make sure that all the pieces fit and that we still meet the objective standard of the number of units the city is requiring on the project. So that is the challenge that we face in meeting all of the objective standards. It's a pretty tough list to get everything in and fitting and working on an engineering basis, but if there is something that we can do, we'll work with the city to do it. So we're happy to have that conversation further. Thank you.
Having heard that, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that there's a period of time between an approval, should it come tonight, and the time that a building permit is requested and improvement plans, perhaps a sum of a design feature that we can help address what we heard tonight from Councilmember Freitas, to alleviate or ameliorate, whatever the word is, to help soften the impact of an impact that was identified or discussed at the last meeting. So if you want to provide that in your direction to staff to work with the applicant, and we can certainly come back, there's a certain amount of latitude that we have with respect to changing the whole site plan versus having some kind of a tweak that smells the test of substantial compliance, if you will, that we can move forward with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So before I ask my question, I guess one of the challenges to the point about having worked on this for two years is the fact that this council saw it for the first time a little over 30 days ago. And so, not that that's a developer's challenge, but it just makes it difficult when we have, you know, a month to respond to a design that's been in the works for a long time. And I don't know how to reconcile that, but that would be something to be, I think, be helpful. So my question has to do with Empire Avenue. So historically, Empire Avenue has been a joint project between the cities of Brentwood and Antioch. And Antioch builds our half of the street, Antioch being the developers, because we don't have a street impact fee, so the cost goes directly to the developer. And Brentwood builds their side of the street, and that includes the full four lanes, landscape median, undergrounding, overhead utilities, the whole nine yards. So in the case of the frontage along this project, there is no condition of approval for one-half of the street requirement on the Antioch side. There's an existing curb and gutter. I understand that there's going to be six-foot landscape strip and a five-foot separated sidewalk, but I don't see anywhere where the provision for this project to build or to pay for their half of the street is included in this project. And so I'm wondering where that is or where that's going to come from, because if this developer doesn't build it, since it fronts on them, the city, it falls back on the city, and the city does not have the money since we don't have a street impact fee. So there's no money to build our half of the obligation, and it's going to create a problem. So I'll ask that question. I don't know which one of the staff would answer that. Is that okay? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council. You are correct. They have the frontage along Empire. They do have a six-foot wide landscape strip and a separated sidewalk that will be done with this project. The center median is not included.
So who's going to build the center median when that four lanes gets extended to the north along this project frontage?
It would be a conversation with us and whoever's developing with Brentwood, I would imagine.
Or Oakley, I guess. Maybe that's Oakley across the street, I'm told, but one of the two, Brentwood or Oakley.
Okay. Either way, yeah, because like you said, we have our curb and gutter in place on the western side, that's set, so they'll be doing the frontage improvements adjacent to their property and their project. But as for future improvements into the median and on the other side, there is nothing planned.
So why isn't this project being conditioned to do it? Since that's historically what every other project up and down Lone Tree and Empire's been required to do.
I'm not sure.
So I'd like to add a condition of approval for this project to be required to pay for their half of the cost of whatever it takes to build, you know, whatever their proportionate share is of the ultimate width of Empire Avenue across, from Wicklow up across their northern frontage.
While we're together here, would that be a deferred improvement agreement, Scott, that you're thinking about as far as an obligation? I think that's where you go, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, either if it could be constructed now, that's fine, if it's a deferred improvement agreement, but as long as, as long as...
There's an obligation.
The city of Antioch fulfills our responsibility for our half of the street, and being that it's the developer's responsibility when I say the city of Antioch.
Then I would suggest that you have the applicant agree on record that they would be willing to accept that condition.
We'd be happy to look at a specific proposal, but I'm not sure I heard exactly what it would be. It's extreme, it's potentially extraordinarily costly, and we're not sure we see a nexus and proportionality to the impacts of this project, which is, of course, the critical aspect. Not saying we wouldn't consider it, but that would be the fundamental limitation on the lawful ability to require it. We'd just have to see a specific proposal.
And I think... I could give you the condition right now, if you'd like to know the proposal of what...
And...
How do I figure that out?
Should be on the record. What we're saying is we'd have to have some sense of what kind of cost that would impose, which is a difficult thing to do, standing right here tonight.
Do you want to take, so we're going to take a 10-minute break, recess for staff to be able to talk for a minute. We'll be back at 8:55.
Meeting at recess, 8:42 PM.
All right, welcome back from our recess. It went a little longer than 10 minutes, I apologize. So, this is item number five. Could I please have the roll? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Torres Walker is excused. Councilmember Freitas?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha?
Here.
Mayor Bernal?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum at 9:06, 9:07 PM.
All right, so I will turn this back over to staff.
Mayor, council, we've discussed with staff, a proposal for the council's consideration, although you should hear from, from the applicant. They should be heard on this. To deal with this issue is that there would be a general condition that would require the improvements of the road, including the median, to the approval of the city engineer subject to the consultation with the city attorney. So, we keep it at a very general level that will allow us to then work with the applicant to minimize any impacts, address the concerns about Nexus. I do believe as a general matter, requiring a median to be improved as a condition for development across the, you know, essentially on, on the street, would be within Nexus requirements, but we are more than willing to meet and address this with the applicant. So, I think we can keep the condition general. If our, Mr. Store wants to comment, but I do think the developer needs to be heard about this. I believe they may have some objections that they'll want to state, but that is something the council could consider.
Mr. Mayor, I have some potential language, I'd like to throw out there as an option. And I'm happy to repeat it, because my writing's not very good, anyway. Prior to recordation of final map, the applicant will work with staff from the public works department and city attorney's office to determine the, the extent of their participation in the construction of a median along the project's frontage.
That sure doesn't sound very strong, to, to determine the extent of the participation.
It's vague enough to give discretion to staff, and I defer to, to council to see if we, if we want to, you know.
Excuse me, they shall construct to the parameters, dimensions, that are determined by the city engineer with the consultation of the city attorney.
That would be to a standard specification that we have?
Yes.
You know, let me just try to put that in there and figure out where.
Yes, basically to one-half of an arterial standard, or, or pay their proportionate share of one-half of an arterial standard.
Maybe you can just work on something like adding that to what I already decided?
Yeah, I, I wrote something down here, so I'll give it a shot.
So, I think that, if that, again, that's some, that is a condition that can, if there's a motion to approve the project with that condition, that would be something the council could consider. But, again, the developer should have an opportunity to present, even though the public hearing is closed, they should have an opportunity to address that.
All right. Would the developer like to address that?
On the record, Dan Gollub, first of all, I want to be clear that we're committed in good faith to working with you and working with staff, so we'd really like to work something out. With that said, I think we just heard there's an objective standard related to this. I have to reserve an objection that the time for telling us that there's an objective standard related to this issue would have come and gone, and we're not aware of there being an objective standard on this question. With that said, I think we're willing to sit and work with you. We'd work with, in good faith, to try to get to the end of that process. Are you going to get in? I was really, I was really getting geared up, though.
We're showing that we could participate together. The, the point was not, I didn't, I don't think I said objective standard, but there's a construction standard specification, this typical event, most public works departments where they have an arterial.
Yeah, there's an arterial design standard.
That's the words, yes, thank you.
It's really hard to have engineers on both sides of this, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor. It puts me in a position where I can't really compete. With that said, I do have to put on the record that I think we would object to the extent that that ends up in something that doesn't meet Nexus and proportionality standards, shows fairness with respect to all other properties that are similarly situated, and issues with the Mitigation Fee Act, Housing Accountability Act, and Housing Element Law. So, standing here today, I'm not sure I can say that we agree that the outcome of that would be something that we can agree to, so we have to reserve an objection on that. We will work with you, though.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any other comments or questions from council before somebody makes a motion on this? So, I'll go ahead and make a motion on this, that, that we adopt a resolution approving vesting tentative subdivision map and design review for the Slatton Ranch Town Home Project, with the added condition that the developer is required to improve Empire Avenue to an arterial, to one-half arterial road standard as approved by the city engineer in consultation with the city attorney. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me. In proportionate share, if Mr. Store could, sorry, thanks, Tom.
That is correct, the proportionate share, that would, I can say, the other half of it would be participated with the other jurisdictionally of the site.
Correct, so we, we, yes.
Well, that, I think that's, that's the rub, that the city engineer would have to make that determination.
You correct, the length of the frontage from, from, from Wicklow up to the north property line of the project.
So, does your motion have that added to it?
Yes, the, the, the extent of the, the extent of the condition is from Wicklow, Empire Avenue from Wicklow up, up to the north property line of the project. As approved by the city engineer in consultation with the city attorney.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any, any comments before we cast our votes? All right, will you please cast your vote?
Motion passes three to one, with councilmember Torres Walker excused. Freitas opposed, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item, item number six, again, this is continued public hearing, Wildflower Station Town Homes Two, multifamily residential project, acting city manager, Merchant.
Yes, as you mentioned, this is continued, so the same rules apply, the public hearing was already previously closed, so we'll have the same three-minute public comment period as the city attorney had stated previously, and Zoe Meredith, the planning manager, will be providing a brief staff report.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council, again. Again, this is kind of a repeat presentation, but this item was first heard on September 23rd, and I'll just provide a brief reminder. The project is located to the west of the Wildflower Town Homes project, and it is located along Hillcrest Avenue just north of Wildflower Drive. The project site is a housing element site, and the project meets the general plan zoning and objective city standards. The proposed project consists of 159 town home units and 19 buildings. The required approvals are a vesting tentative subdivision map and design review for the proposed architecture and landscaping. At the September 23rd city council meeting, the city council held a public hearing, took public comment, and discussed the project. The council voted to continue the item, and staff prepared additional information in the staff report related to state housing law. So, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map for the development of 19 town home buildings, as well as the design review for the proposed architecture and landscaping. Just call out that yesterday, we sent over, and it's also posted online, just a supplemental attachment, the conditions of approval, that's attachment A, exhibit C, were missing from the packet, but that was printed and is available online now.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have four comments on this. We have Ralph Hernandez, followed by Alora, and Jason.
Ralph Hernandez. According to our general plan, developers are supposed to pay their way. This city has constantly failed to do that, require that. This project is, happens to be one of them. Now, you have had a lot of the residents of the adjacent property, the previous town homes over there, that have submitted letters to the city, and they spoke about all of the crimes that they have suffered under. And, and one of the things they're doing is trying to work with the city to get fencing and a gate, to help mitigate some of the problem, the, the public safety problems that they're having. This project is but another one that is being dumped on the city, not properly mitigated thus far. CFD, fine. Police services, fine, at some point, but you have to charge the right amount of money, or whatever else is required, for your police services. Our police services are being given more and more and more responsibility, and there's no increase in, in your sworn personnel. Your sworn personnel, I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, should be at a minimum 144 based upon the formula that's in the general plan. The general plan requires that they pay, the developers pay, their own way. This is not a project that's going to pay its own way. It has consequences. Now, peculiar to this project, the city is required not to contribute to the problem, make the city continue to be an unsafe and dangerous city, for, for one, the lack of police personnel. This will just add more that you are not providing. You cannot just hope that you will be safe, or this will be a safe project. The adjacent project, right next door, it's already telling you guys how dangerous it is. Now, there is a lot of our police personnel that are being stressed to the point of where the city ultimately is going to have to blame the city for creating the negative environment, for creating the unsafe work conditions, the unsafe environment to our community as a whole. They will make millions off of this project, they, the developers, the landowners, whoever. You see them here, they basically poo-poo the right-thinking thing of what this project is going to cause to our community negatively. Thank you.
Can we have Alora McGuire, Jason Lester, and Daniel Gollub?
Mayor, council members, my name is Alora McGuire, on behalf of Contra Costa Residents for Responsible Development. Residents is a coalition of individuals and labor organizations with members who live and work in the city of Antioch and surrounding communities, and as members of communities where development takes place, the coalition supports sustainable development by encouraging compliance with state and local environmental and land use laws. Contra Costa Residents often participate in the public review and comment process provided by SEQA to protect the communities that they build and live in. Residents is not asking the city to deny the project. Rather, our comments on this project demonstrated the project may result in health impacts from construction-related DPM emissions and noise impact to nearby residences from project construction and operation. As a result of our comments, the city provided additional discussion and analysis of the project's potential noise impacts and the mitigation measures that would be implemented. These efforts ensure that the SEQA process remained open and transparent. The city responded to these comments and improved the project. However, applicant's councils submitted a letter to the city containing factually and legally inaccurate statements that attack Contra Costa Residents' right to participate in the SEQA and land use process. Today, we submitted a letter that addresses these misstatements and describes significant contributions unions and community coalitions have made to environmental, health, and safety through their participation in SEQA proceedings. Most importantly, the unions raise serious environmental concerns and do not walk away from these issues until the issues are resolved. We appreciate the opportunity to present these concerns to the city, and if the city has any questions, my colleague Christina Caro is available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. So, my name is Jason Lester, Assistant Business Manager of Plumbers and Steamfitters Local 159. I'm here representing 300 Antioch families that are members of other unions that are affiliated with mine, the Electricians Union, the Sprinkler Fitters Union, and the Sheep Metal Workers Union. They are also members of Contra Costa Residents for Responsible Development. We advocate for residential projects that result in more, a more sustainable and equitable Antioch. We are proud of the work that we do to support policies and projects that will address our housing crisis. We are also proud of the work that we do to lessen the environmental impacts of those projects. Of course, as construction workers, we are exposed to the, to environmental impacts like air pollution, noise, and hazardous chemicals as we work, resulting in a much higher rate of cancer and respiratory health problems. I was here at the last hearing, we spoke on both of these items last time, where we explicitly did not call for this project to be rejected by you. We did ask for appropriate environmental mitigations, which our attorney has spoken to. He received a letter from the developer's attorney attacking us for standing up for our neighbors on the construction workforce, and the construction workforce that is full of half-truths and gross misrepresentations of facts. For example, it states that we will file SEQA comments and then withdraw them if we gain a labor agreement. You will note no examples were given. The reason for that is it simply does not happen. SEQA offers the public opportunities to advocate for safer, more sustainable projects. We appreciated the opportunity to speak to these concerns to the city, and appreciated the city's consideration of our comments on this project. Again, thank you again, mayor and city council members, hope you guys have a great night. Thank you.
Daniel Gollub?
Hello again, council members, Dan Gollub for the project applicant. I will not repeat what I said, but the same. I will not repeat what I said, but the same issues with respect to the housing element law, Housing Accountability Act, and other state laws certainly apply to this project in the same way they did to the previous even more strongly, probably. And the more specific articulation of that, of course, is in our letters and the record. With respect to the sufficiency of the analysis that the city's experts did, that a new EIR is not warranted, that's very amply supported and more than supported by substantial evidence, I actually should make the additional point, the project is now fully exempt from SEQA pursuant to AB 130, which was the law that passed this summer. So the terrific analysis that was done and the mitigation that was imposed and all those things are a significant added benefit above and beyond what would happen. And if there were to ever be an issue with that SEQA compliance that the city did, the project's now fully exempt and wouldn't be subject to any mitigation measures. The state has made projects that are less than eighty-five feet in these types of locations fully exempt from SEQA with no question. So it's great that you have the housing element EIR because it fully covers the project, it lets you impose some of those consistent mitigation measures to protect environmental impacts. So it's one of the last ones through the door that we didn't formally invoke AB 130, but if we needed to, the project would be fully exempt under AB 130 regardless. I will note that we did very much listen to comments from the community on this and other projects. We're very willing to fence and gate this property. We heard that that was a community concern. We do need the neighboring HOA to be okay with maintenance obligations since it is on their site, but if that's okay with them, that's okay with us. We're willing to do it. It wasn't something that came up. It's not an objective standard, but I hope it shows that that doesn't mean that we're not willing to consider those kinds of concerns as they come up in the process. I think that's all I have unless there's any questions.
All right. Thank you. We have no further public comment cards?
All right. We will turn this over to council for any questions or comments.
Quick question. Explain to me again why the commercial piece was removed from this plan?
So this is a housing element site, so the site was rezoned to housing as part of our housing element update, and that occurred in January twenty twenty-three.
That's unfortunate.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
None? Then do I have a motion on this project?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this item based on the report that we received from the planning commission that it meets all the requirements that was met to move this project forward for development. Obviously, it was intended at one time to be a mixed development. That was removed apparently in twenty twenty-three is what I think I just heard. But considering that this, the language that's being presented to us in this item meets the requirements that have been approved by the planning commission, I will go ahead and move to approve this item.
All right, is there a motion from Mayor Protem Rocha? Do I have a second? I'll second it. Will you please cast your votes?
With Councilmember Torres Walker excused, the vote is two to two with two abstained, which is Freitas and Wilson?
Two opposed.
Two opposed? Okay. Two opposed, Freitas and Wilson. Not passed.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have a question or comment?
The, the motion does not carry, this does not preclude us, I believe, from continuing the item until we have a fifth member present, but at this stage, the item does not carry. A two-two vote is, is effectively a no vote, but if there is an alternative motion to continue this one more time, that is something that could be considered.
I would be willing to make a motion to continue this to the next city. Is there enough noticing time for the next city council meeting on the fourth?
We can continue this, yeah, it, it's noticed, so we would have to continue a date certain.
So the fourth or the twentieth?
The fourth or the twentieth.
Let's do it on the fourth. Let's just...
It's your motion.
All right. I'm moving, we continue this to the fourth.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, four zero, with Councilmember Torres Walker excused.
All right. Moving on to public hearing item number seven, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the public hearing rules on this?
During public hearings, each side is entitled to one main presenter who may not speak for more than ten minutes. All other speakers during public hearing items are entitled to a maximum of five minutes. These time limits may be modified depending on the number of speakers or number of items on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Groups who are here regarding an item may identify themselves by raising their hands at the appropriate time to show support for one of their speakers. During certain types of hearings, the applicant is allowed to give their presentation first. After all testimony is received, the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal. After having heard from the public, the agenda item will be closed. Deliverations will then be limited to members of the city council.
All right. So this item is developer incentives for accessible units, and the recommended action from staff is, it's recommended city council introduce by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance to adopt text amendments, adding Title IX, Chapter Five, Article Forty Three to the Antioch Municipal Code, developer incentives for accessible units, acting city manager/merchant.
Yes, Monet Boyd, our assistant planner, will provide a staff report on this item.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Monet Boyd, and I'm the assistant planner here at the city of Antioch. The ordinance I'm presenting for your approval tonight would implement an update to, to the Antioch zoning code around developer incentives for accessible units in furtherance of our housing element implementation goals. Some background on why we are pursuing this ordinance. In January twenty twenty-three, Antioch City Council adopted the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element, which contains sixty-seven different implementing programs aimed towards increasing supply and access to housing. The ordinance would support compliance with housing element program five point one point three incentivizing accessible units. This would incentivize developers through development standards, concessions, or fee waivers, or reductions to increase the number of accessible units beyond the federal requirement of five percent for subsidized developments. The federal requirement is Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act, which establishes various physical accessibility requirements for new construction, acquisition, and rehabilitation projects that receive federal funding, including five percent of units, must be made ADA accessible to persons with mobility disabilities. So the definition of an accessible unit, an accessible unit refers to a residential unit that is designed and constructed to comply with the accessibility standards outlined in the, in the Americans with Disabilities Act. These units are specifically tailored to accommodate people living with disabilities, ensuring they have equal access to housing and related amenities. This is not, well, design features in an accessible unit, this is not an extensive list by any means, but, but a few features you'll find in an accessible unit. So doors must provide thirty-two inches minimum clear width, lever or easy-to-use hardware, grab bars in the bathroom, lower countertops, entrances free of steps and stairs. So the, the ordinance developer incentives for accessible units, this ordinance will establish a tiered system that allows developers to access incentives based upon the percentage of accessible units in a multifamily rental project. The proposed ordinance would allow developers to access incentives based upon the percentage of ADA accessible units within a multifamily rental housing project. The proposed ordinance establishes a three-tiered incentive structure. Tier one, project must contain six to ten percent accessible units. Tier two, the project must contain eleven to fifteen percent accessible units. Tier three, the project must contain more than fifteen percent accessible units. Applicants may access a maximum of three incentives, however, the number of incentives available corresponds to the tier achieved. One incentive for tier one, two for tier two, and so on. Applicants may select incentives from different tiers, provided they meet the eligibility criteria for each, however, they may not select multiple incentives from a single tier. The tiers include modifications to building heights, open space areas, and parking requirements. These incentives came, came from looking at the downtown specific plan and the standards there, developer outreach, as well as looking at the reductions that developers ask for, for multifamily development projects through state density bonus. So, lastly, in closing, it is recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance to be in compliance with our housing element, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open it now. Do we have a proponent of this project?
No, we do not.
Okay. Do we have an opponent of this project?
No, we do not.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this project?
We have no public comment cards.
All right. Being that we have no proponent, no opponent, or no public comment, I will close the public hearing, and we will now turn it over to council. Councilmember Freitas, yes?
So I do have a lot of questions with regards to the tiered incentives, and I also have one comment with regards to the staff report. So let's take a look at tier one. The project must contain six to ten percent accessible units. So the current standard that we have here is that our arterial street minimum is fifteen foot setback, that the collector's street is a minimum fifteen foot, and the local street minimum is ten feet. The, the request is to modify it. Minimum front setback requirements may be reduced by five feet for the overall project. So I just, I, I really need to understand what that means to me as not an engineer or a planner. So today, normal residential streets are how wide? Normal? Are they fifteen feet? Are they twenty feet? Are they how many feet?
Can I jump in? They're, they're thirty-six, thirty-six feet curb to curb.
Curb to curb. So how, how, I'm not sure, I, you know, so we're going to go from fifteen feet to ten feet. So is this the internal roads? I, I don't, where does this apply?
So it's not the, the arterial collector and local is determined by the type of road in the general plan. If you were to take, for example, you were talking about the arterial, so the fifteen foot setback is from the property line. Generally, the properly, property line is about five feet from the back of walk or the back of the sidewalk. So it's talking about the area between the property line and the building would be reduced. It's not affecting the actual street construction.
All right. So we have, wait, just a second there, please. So we have the curb gutter, right? And the setback is fifteen feet today?
So the setback is always measured from a property line, generally speaking. May look to the mayor here, so it's thirty-six curb to curb, but it's fifty-six generally because you have five feet of sidewalk and then five feet of, like, public right-of-way that's usually landscaped, and then starts the property line, then you're measuring the fifteen feet from that property line.
So maybe you use back of walk to the building's twenty feet. So, so the back of walk is, is, it would be twenty feet from the back of walk to a building would be the...
Back of walk means?
Back of the sidewalk.
Back of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, you know, here's the street, street and gutter, here's the curb, then there's the sidewalk, and at, at that point...
Yeah.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet to the house.
To the house. So most of these houses have a garage, correct? I mean, a driveway, excuse me.
Yeah, so just to be clear, this is for multifamily projects, so...
Okay. So, but the previous, we, we saw a lot of garages and things of that sort right up front of the house. I mean...
Yeah, so if you just are taking the previous project, for example, the front setback is really, it's not the internal street network there, what you would be looking at it would be like from Hillcrest, for example.
So when we talk about changing from fifteen feet to ten feet, what is the, in a multiple unit, right, there are multiple units, I mean, what's the practical impact?
So there would just be less frontage landscaping essentially because the building would be closer to the street.
And, so actually, it just financially is an incentive to the developers, right?
So the other benefit is that we're thinking that generally, if you have an ADA or an accessible unit, you're going to need, right, bigger bathrooms for turnarounds, bigger hallways, so that creates a bigger unit, so this gives away for that type of unit to fit on a property potentially.
So is that what happens? If we're giving, if the city's standard is to give up this five feet, that equates to the inside of the, the, the unit to be more accessible?
So we can't state that, but that is, an accessible unit does have certain requirements that a non-accessible unit would have that require more space. So these are, again, an example of just what we have done through outreach or seeing what other, you know, concessions through state density bonus law, we've seen these types of requests.
I, I understand that. I mean, to me, you're like, I was on crutches and braces for six years. There was no ADA when I, when I had crutches and braces, and so I'm very, very familiar to physical constraints. And so if I'm giving, if the standard is to give it up, there has to be an advantage inside to anybody who is physically challenged. And I just, I guess I can't see that nexus between giving this up and something positive is going to happen in the unit itself. But you're saying yes.
We're saying that's a possibility. I can, you know, we can't force somebody to then build a larger unit besides what would be required for ADA.
Okay. So the next one, you know, one space per five units for guest parking, there are a lot of these, so you might as well just stand there if you're going to be...
We can also have the project planner.
Okay, whoever. So the next standard, one space per five units for guest parking. For example, hundred-unit project equals, you know, twenty spaces.
Yes.
Okay. So a hundred units. So I'm assuming there's at least one individual that's in a unit.
Mm-hmm.
It could be more.
Yes.
Okay. So we could have a hundred people and there's only twenty parking spaces.
Okay. So this is just the requirement for guest parking, so the park, there are parking requirements for, I apologize for not providing that here in the current requirement, for that, the number of rooms when it comes to each unit. This is just the additional for the guest parking. So the guest parking is on top of each of the requirements for the unit. So the, so the perception is that the people living in the unit would still have their parking spaces. It would be guest parking.
So Ms. Boyd, so every unit, I assume, has a parking space?
Yes, that would not be reduced.
So when we talk about the hundred units, there's at least a hundred parking spaces, and this is twenty extra for, for guests?
For guests, yes.
All right. Well, that makes, that makes sense. Okay. Under open space, which is the third one that's now down, is this building is, and roofed structures with recreational functions may occupy up to twenty percent of the area counted as common open space. That's the existing. Then we're, we're actually under the modified, thirty-five percent of the total area counted as open space may be provided on a roof. So if you have, let's say, a two- or three-story facility, you're actually talking about something literally on the roof.
Yeah, it could be a roof, a roof structure, or, or something on the roof, like a, like a, a rooftop garden you could think about, or even, but also, this also refers to like a recreation center that folks may offer, or even a pool house that could also be counted in the open space requirement.
And it'd be located on the, on the roof.
Yeah, that could, that's one of the options, and then also thinking about the recreational space as well.
Okay. So then going to the next tier, and I apologize, it's just, you know, I, I need to understand...
No worries, yeah.
What it means. So the, this is between the eleven to fifteen percent accessible units. So the maximum height in our current is forty-five feet, so I assume that's two stories?
About two to three.
Two to three. And then... And then the request is to modify. Maximum height, building height may be increased by 10-feet above the height allowed in the zoning. So we're increasing the density, is that what's happening here?
No, so for this, the density can't be increased, the density would remain the same. So this is the example from R20, so it would still be 20...
Twenty units per acre?
Yes, 20 dwelling units per acre. This would just allow for higher ceilings, or if they, if there was a mixed-use project, something on the bottom, allowing for more height there.
All right, so it's height, but that does not equate to higher density?
No, not for these incentives.
All right, I appreciate that. And then, again, going down the next one. All multifamily residential development shall provide a total of 200 square feet of usable open space per unit. And then we're saying we're gonna cut that in half?
Yes, so the usable open space per unit is usually divided into two. So it's common open space as well as like your private patio or something like that. So it could be the developer would reduce the size of the patio, or put all of the usable open space to common open space, so it can be distributed in different ways to meet that modification.
Well, I guess, you know, those little patio areas are so small anyway. I mean, and if you cut it by 50%, there's not much left. I mean, if they have a dog or cat, you know, that kind of constrains them. Why would we do that?
One of the reasons why this one was chosen for the modified common open space is that this is a concession that we see often from developers for state density bonus law. And this is a way to kind of provide an incentive, but also control it so that it's not less than 100 square feet. Sometimes it's a request of less than that. So having the, instead of 200, but still having the usable open space, the leisure landscaping, leisure space, recreational space there, but it would be half.
Okay, I just have a concern with that one then. The last tier three, which is 15% or above. So under this one, again, 1.5 spaces per unit, up to two bedrooms, one space to be covered. I mean, what does that mean?
So if you think about a rental or apartment project, you'll see some of those carport structures over the parking lot. And so it would be that those kind of structures would be reduced. So they would still have the parking, but those covered, they wouldn't necessarily have to be covered.
Why would we do that? I mean, number one, storage is, I mean, there's so little storage that we, you know, we build storage facilities that people pay several hundred dollars a month to put things in. Why would we reduce it? She was doing so well.
Well, I'll just add that we have a separate standard that's not in the tiers about storage requirements, that's like a locked storage facility for each unit. So that wouldn't be reduced with this. And I'll just, also, not to jump in here, but to jump in, that it's covered, not enclosed, so this really does count as like a carport or like a car cover. So it's not really an area that would be used for storage.
Okay, even for cars, I mean, why would you reduce, I don't understand the rationale. I mean, cars, if it is covered, it's, you know, particularly for somebody who has a physical accessibility problem, you know, they want to make sure that they're not getting wet and things of that sort, why would we reduce the coverage?
And this is just ideas we had of ways to potentially incentivize for a developer that this could save them money that maybe they could put into accessible units.
Well, I guess my real-life experience is that when you are physically handicapped, you are looking for cover, because it's very difficult to walk and to get to the distance. So I guess this is one of those ones personally I have problems with, because as a former physically handicapped person, it is terrible to get out of a car and it's monsonal rain, and you can't, you can barely move. So of the standards, this one frankly, you know, I have a problem with. The other in the staff report, and this is why I guess I do need to understand. It's on page two, one, two, three, four paragraphs down. And you had a meeting on the 19th and the 25th with the development community. And developers expressed strong interest in the city's efforts, but noted that Section 504 only applied to projects receiving federal funding. In contrast, the proposed ordinance would apply to all new multifamily residential projects, regardless of funding source, thereby expanding the reach and impact of accessibility incentives citywide. Why would we do that? I mean, I have no problem that it's a federal project, federal money's coming in, it's a federal standard based on local government, but, you know, if we had this be the standard for everyone, I'm not sure that you increase the accessibility units, but it does decrease the cost to developers. And so I'm seeing if the intent of this is to really take care of accessibility, I'm not sure that we're achieving our goal by letting any project have these incentives.
So to allow, the concern is to allow all projects to access these incentives so that they, or to incentivize them to have more accessible units, you feel like that would be of concern for the city?
So if you have a developer, he builds a hun, he or she builds 100 units, and, you know, he gets, he or she gets all these incentives, and a year later, he or she sells it. Who gets the benefit?
So built, so I think that's a great example, but built into this is also an agreement that they would have to, that they would have to go into with the city, ensuring that the accessible units are still maintained and reserved for however many percentage that they chose. So if it's 6 to 10% or 15% or more, or whatever threshold that they met, they would still have to maintain those, and that would be an agreement between the developer and the city to continue that.
For how long? In perpetuity?
Right now, it's not written with a, with a time limit, so it could be in perpetuity.
So that, you know, if it's, you know, forever and ever, you know, maybe I could be persuaded, but, you know, I'm afraid of a developer who may come in and say, okay, I'm going to do this, get these incentives. It reduces his or her costs, and then suddenly she sells, and she or he have pocketed the money, but the benefit is not truly there.
Yeah, so that we could easily add in perpetuity into that.
Ms. Boyd, you did a very good job. This is the first time I've seen you in 10 months. I just want to commend you, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments, council? No? So I have a couple of questions, somewhat along the lines of Councilmember Freitas's, so. So these incentives, for example, a rooftop open space, right? So is there gonna be an elevator provided for these people that have accessibility issues to get to the rooftop to enjoy this amenity?
That is the intention, so with someone having three to four units, usually you have to require, and then if you want to have accessible units spread out on the third or fourth floor, you have to have an elevator included. And so they would be able to, well, the intention would be that they would be able to access the rooftop. I can say that the, like a future developer can do, will do that. But that would be the hope and intention.
Because as we know, elevators are very expensive to construct and maintain. And so I guess the incentive doesn't appear to align with the needs of the person that would maybe access, and I know accessibility can mean a lot of different things. I guess the other thing, just overall, the whole idea that you have somebody who has accessibility needs, and then you provide them less space to park their vehicle, you provide them less space to have covered parking, you provide them less space to have open space, you cut it in half. It just intuitively does not make sense that you're reducing the amount of amenities for somebody who probably could use more of them. So that just, that just didn't really make sense to me. And then the other thing is that these are cumulative. So if you do tier three, from what I understand, you get to pick one from tier one, one from tier two, one from tier three, correct? And then it's also my understanding that this is independent of density bonuses, correct?
Correct.
So then, if somebody wanted to do density bonuses for lower income, that would be in addition to these bonuses that are being allowed for the accessibility. So now you have double the impacts to the development that, I mean, I can't even imagine what these things would look like, right? Because, and maybe Zoe can jump in and assure me that they look awesome, because I'm just not seeing it.
Well, I was just gonna say that under state density bonus law, developers afforded an unlimited number of waivers or reduction of development standards. So the, even without asking for these accessibility requirements, a developer using state density bonus law has an unlimited number of waiver of reduction of development standards of things like this, if they can show that it would prevent the project from being built at the permitted density. So you could hear similar arguments of the open space is preventing me from building at density, the parking is preventing me from building at the density. So just to keep in mind that regardless of these, state density bonus law has a lot of concessions and also waivers, which, similar but different, that would allow a developer to reduce development standards in a way we're talking about, or even different or more.
I guess it just doesn't, with unlimited standards, and then we're gonna impose even more on ourselves, it just doesn't intuitively make sense to me why we would do that to ourselves. I understand the desire to create more accessible units, I understand that. But, and I guess, you know, the state's already imposing so much on us, and then for us to voluntarily impose even more on ourselves, I just, I frankly don't understand the logic of that. And then without having the benefit, we get to see these plans that show what it is supposed to look like in a drawing on a little 11-by-17. But when we see our first one of these things go up, I think we may be surprised at what it looks like. And so I guess, and then by that time, it's too late, right? So I just, the cumulative nature of this, and then the fact that we're reducing, one of the options would be to reduce the space that people can, can, and then the fact that they have an option of either using it for the overall open space for the place, so they could say, we're gonna do nothing for the units, they have no space outside their unit, and then cut the other space outside it in half. It just, it just, again, doesn't, I just can't visualize how that is gonna be a quality product for people that need a quality product, you know, so.
And we could definitely take out that, you know, the open space, we're hearing some concerns, you know, we could take that out.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add to that this is a menu of options, that it's not set in stone. Definitely, if you feel like those things need to change, or instead of 50%, maybe 30%, or whatever the city sees as best, because this is something within our housing element as an incentive. So it's something that we can build together. I don't think it has to be what's in the menu that we have in the staff report. And also, a part of the ordinance built in is the application processing. So the application will be considered by, depending on the level, the zoning administrator, planning commission, and/or city council. So the incentives that they choose or put in their application, you all will be able to see as well. It wouldn't be something that would be as like state density bonus law. But it would be that you could say that maybe this isn't feasible or doesn't work. Like, we would have more discretion over these incentives.
So, so the other question I have is, if somebody will use the 100, will use the tier two, go from 200 square feet to 100 square feet per unit, is that every unit in the whole project gets this bonus? So if you have 11% of the units are accessible, and you have 100-unit project, does that mean all 100 units get to go down to the 100 square feet?
Yeah, it could apply to the whole project.
Okay, so that's, so it's not just the 11 units that are benefiting?
Right.
Okay, I've asked enough questions. Councilmember Freitas?
So the legal requirement, we're at 5% if there are federal funds?
Yes.
And this whole purpose is to try to increase that?
Yes.
But we're not mandated by it?
No, no. It's just a housing element implementation program that was suggested when the housing element was adopted.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think you brought up some very good points. I would suggest at this point that, you know, you've come to staff, you've heard, you know, council's discussion. It might be good to send it back to you, and I, particularly the question, if you get, you know, density bonuses with this. You know how I am on design, it seems a little bit that we're building a Frankenstein-type of buildings, but I don't want to give up, because there are a lot of people who have accessibility issues. And I think as a concept, as a policy, in, you know, trying to encourage it makes sense. But, you know, I appreciate having this dialogue. I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, to you and council, that we refer it back to staff, let them take another look at it. But I'm particularly, when it does come back, if that's the decision of the council, that we look at your question about what does it look like with density bonus and this collective? I mean, I'd like to see what that looks like.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess I, you know, if I visualize this in Oakland or downtown Walnut Creek, it's one thing, right? But when I think of it in Antioch, on Lone Tree Way, like, or next to In Shape or something, it just, I just can't visualize how this is going to be. It's not, it's not a totally urban setting, and so it's just gonna be so jammed in. So I've already said enough, so. We have a, is that a motion that you'd like to make to send us back to, yes, sorry?
Just a clarification, would you want us to go back to the planning commission first before going back to council?
I'd like to see, I'd like to have a study session personally to talk about this in a more casual setting, like Mr. Store likes to do, even in non-study session settings. But, so that would be my preference, is to have something like that, where we could kind of talk it out and kind of get more questions answered in a more casual setting.
Okay, and would you maybe like more ideas of incentives we could provide or ways to modify these and that?
I would, particularly with the mayor's question, you know, the housing bonus and this together, it's like, what does it look like? I mean, you know, draw pictures of what it looks like. I mean, how big are these things? Are they gonna be 300 square feet inside? I mean, that's a very urbanized thing. I would suggest a study session, but, you know, we had a very successful meeting between the city council and the planning commission, I don't know why we couldn't do it together again. I mean, I thought it was very positive, and they can hear some of our concerns, we can hear some of theirs.
And I guess the only other thing I'd like to just add to that is I know we have a lot of meetings scheduled coming up, and so this is just gonna be another one, but if this is important for us to keep moving on, any thoughts?
I was gonna say, I understand the intent from what I've read here, but there just seems to be so many questions of what this might look like. So I too would like to have more time to learn about the pros and cons of the three different tiers and how it can, you know, how each element can adjust. And I'm also trying to understand if the intent is to support our disabled community, which obviously there's a need in our community. I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the concept of reducing space, it doesn't make sense to me. Because when I'm thinking about ADA access, generally you need more space. You know, when you look at ramping and different things of that nature in homes, or even at the high school when I was principal there, whenever we did ADA upgrades to meet the new requirements, ramping had to go all the way out, and we had to give some pretty good space to make that happen. So I'm just trying to understand how you do less space to meet the needs of disabled members of our community. So that's what I'm trying to understand, how that goes one way or the other.
As much as I love meetings, I'd like to suggest or request that we do this first quarter of next year, and not try to squeeze it in between now and the end of the year, as far as the staffing and your availability. So I put it on the table.
Sure, so just a quick question, Monade, you. So this is, you said there's 63 of these in the housing... So this is, you said there's sixty-three of these in the housing element?
Sixty-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixty-seven. And so one of them is the, the inclusionary housing ordinance, right? That's one. And this is another one of the sixty-seven.
Yes.
And so these are pretty major, right? If we're talking about six, are, are you all intending to bring the other sixty-five back to us over time or how does this work?
So a lot of the programs are really programs that Terry House already administers. So I know that list sounds long and it is a lot of things, but just keep in mind that a lot of things are things we're already doing. Some of the programs are like, have pre-application meetings with housing developers. That's something staff does naturally with all developers. So that's like a checkbox out of all of those. So there are larger things like the inclusionary housing or this that you would see coming forward, but you're not seeing all of it. And then, you know, in our annual housing report that we provide in April, that's where you see that whole list and you see our progress, where a lot of it is that we're doing it or we already have a program in place.
So, so to me, probably understanding our housing element would be maybe a first step before even getting into this discussion, because it seems like, you know, we're like kinda surprised when we get this, you know, and ask, have a lot of questions. So I don't know if there's a way to maybe feed this to us a little bit, you know, maybe more broad and then narrow it down and, 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 because to me, yeah.
Perhaps a suggestion would be to have a study session first quarter of next year with the joint to go over the housing element.
I mean, I think it would help.
Because we'll be preparing that report in March for April the first. So I mean, I think the time would be good.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Previous city councils have used the third Tuesdays, and we've discussed this for past year, for just these kinds of things that, that we just try to keep the, the second, third and fourth Tuesdays on our calendars open. And so that when these things come up, we can say, okay, let's use January study session or March study session. I just think it's, you know, we all know that Tuesdays may be, you know, taken and it helps staff with regards to scheduling. And I think that, you know, we might wanna suggest that we, you know, all, second, third and fourth Tuesdays be free so that staff can, can properly plan.
Okay. So that's, that's an idea and then we can talk with the city manager about that and, and how we wanna plan, plan that with all the other housing elements and other things we have going on, or, yes, not housing elements, our general plan update, I mean, going on. So, so do we, what was the recommendation? It's recommended we introduce it by title only. It sounds like we're not gonna do that tonight. Do we have a, a motion to bring this back first quarter along with maybe a presentation of our housing ordinance in a joint setting with the planning commission on a third Tuesday?
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes four zero.
With councilman?
Councilmember Torres Walker excused.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, thank you for that presentation, Monae and staff. Item number eight, parcel map for Lone Tree Retail and Apartments.
Good evening. So this is, the project applicant is proposing a parcel map, which is creating five lots from seven existing parcels. Director Bunting, who's gonna actually, we're blessing us with his presence for the remainder of the meeting, he's all Paul under him, is going to present on this.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, this project, on August twentieth, the City Planning Commission approved a tentative parcel map for five lot subdivision on the Lone Tree Rental Commercial Project, approximately seventeen and a half acres. It's located within the development area. The project is located north of Lone Tree Way between Eagles Ridge and Blue Rock Drive. The project applicant is proposing a parcel map, which has created five lots from seven existing parcels. The applicant does not, does not include the entitlement of any development or, and only pertains to the parcel map. Developments on the five parcels are to comply with consistent, to comply and be consistent with the stormwater control requirements and updated stormwater control plan and operations and maintenance plan will be required to be submitted with new development applications. With the recordation of the parcel map, updates to the public easements will be recorded along, along with the map, existing public easements that are no longer needed will be removed and improvements that are needed for the project will be added. I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comments.
All right. Council, do you have any questions or comments?
If you have questions, on the schematics that were provided to, to the council, we have two and I just wanna ask a question in the, in, in this. So I'm, I'm referring to this schematic. And so we have parcel A, parcel B, C, D and E. And so there is a difference on these two schematics. One, you know, after parcel E, that's it. But on the second schematic, you see drawings, which I assume maybe storm drainage, I don't, I don't know what that, what the, what those mean. And the reason why I'm raising it, is there another lot?
No, there are seven lots that will be transferred into five lots that'll match up with the properties that are out there. This is solely, solely being done for the purpose of the, the easements themselves. The, the easements themselves being recorded and that's why we're here tonight.
So when you look at the second schematic and there's, it looks like, I don't know what, there's something happening there that's not in the first one, what's happening there?
I'm a very consultant engineer, come up and answer a question for you.
I mean, is it storm drains? What is it?
Hi, my name's Andrew Little and I helped prepare the staff report and resolution for Scott. I'm with Inner West Consulting. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. So the question is the difference between the second map that's shown and the first map that's shown?
Yeah, the first one, it doesn't have any, but on the second one, it's showing on to the east, you know, something's happening there. I mean, there's drawings and it looks like, is it storm water? It, it looks like an infrastructure issue. I just wanna know what it is. You don't see it on the first one, you see it on the second one.
Yeah, what's shown on the second one is the easements added. Where you see on the first one, it has all the, all the property lines of the parcels themselves. And then on the second one, that you see is much more cluttered.
Yeah.
Lack of better term, has all the easements that exist on the property. And that's why the map's being recorded in order to, along with the recording of the map, the easements that have changed with regards, there's a few that have been abandoned and there's a few that have also been added.
So if this is approved, do those easements go away?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the purpose of just going through and recording the map, is that, for example, on previous ones that were on the consent calendar with a quit claim and what have you, we can go through the quit claim and have them added and removed that way. But you can also go through, I'm not a surveyor, but trying to speak surveyor terms, you can go through and you can actually record a modified map with the easements modified on them and then the easements that are abandoned or added, yeah, get recorded with it.
That, that's fine. I just, the difference, I'm thinking, I thought it was to be five and it's almost a perfect square. I'm thinking, is this another, you know, building pad or not? And that was part, part of the question. I don't know if the question is for you, but what is the status of In Shape property? Are, are they, are they going to continue in existence? Do we know?
Thank you, Zoe.
I stayed with some notes, just in case. So do you mean the In Shape, the gym itself?
The gym, the property. I mean, the, you know, several people have contacted me and said as soon as the council approved this, you know, In Shape is going to be sold. And so I just wanna know if there's any validity to that.
I haven't heard that at all and I've, you know, know people who go to that gym and continue to go to that gym, so I haven't heard anything like that.
I, I, every day, I'm just very curious, you know, with, with some of the rumors. Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
I'm going back to the same two maps, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor. I'm going back to the same two maps that Councilmember Freitas was referring to. Parcel B, is that where these particular multi, this, this is gonna go? And parcel, I'm assuming parcel B, because parcel A is where In Shape is.
Exactly. Parcel A is In Shape, parcel B will be the multifamily housing and parcels A, B and, or, excuse me, C, D and E are gonna be the retail.
The retail. And so parcel B, if I, I just wanna make sure I read it correct, it's gonna be four hundred and fifty units? A four-story?
I said two something.
Correct. And we're here.
Two forty-five. Yes, so it's a four-story, two hundred and forty-five unit.
Correct. And that's already been processed and approved, so we're not here to speak on the project itself, but rather the map in, in adjusting the easements.
Okay, we just got played. Yeah, I, I'm just not seeing it, but you said it's already been.
No, I'm sorry, I can answer whatever question you have.
No, 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 I see it. I, I see the map. I'm just, it, I think that's just gonna be a lot. You already have, you have already crowded In Shape, three commercial spaces there, that building, this office, this is gonna be a nightmare. That's just my comments on it. So I, as you say, this is already in process, so.
Does, does this parcel map include all of the reciprocal access easements to each of the parcels?
Um, no, it doesn't.
So wouldn't you wanna have all those set up right now on the map so you don't have to try to do those later to make sure everybody has access wherever they need to? Definitely east-west over to the adjacent parcel, you know, that it's gonna join.
Excuse me, this is Justin Patrino.
I'm Justin.
Surveyor engineer for the project.
I work with RAK, so I'm the engineer on, on the parcel B here. Yes, the reciprocal access easements are there. So there's right here between D and E is where there's kind of the big court that's existing. So there's an access easement there. You can see in detail A, in detail A, there's also the twenty-six foot that runs horizontally across from C, D, E to access the In Shape.
Okay, so, so, so there is, I guess my question is, all the parcels have access?
All of them will have access, yes.
Off the main driveway coming in.
Yep.
And, and then there's also access connecting to the, the center to the, I guess it's kind of the north of this parcel.
Correct.
Okay, okay, good. That, that's my only question on that. All right.
So just, just for clarity, so the purpose of this is not, it's just to clean up and to define where these particular parcels are going to be. I mean, I agree with Councilmember Wilson, you know, I hate the project totally, but, you know, this, this is just cleanup for the parcels, right?
More particularly the easements.
The easements.
There's existing easements that are partially being abandoned or being abandoned and there's other ones that are being added in for the utilities that are gonna supply these buildings.
Okay, perfect. Do you, any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve this map, this parcel map? For Lone Tree Way?
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Motion, motion passes three to one with Councilmember Wilson voting no, Councilmember Torres Walker excused.
All right, moving on to item number nine, the First Amendment to the Honeywell International Building Performance Service Agreement, an amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. This is one's continued from the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting.
I'll turn this over to Director Bunting.
Mayor, City Council, super happy to be here about this tonight. I apologize for the last meeting, I'm gonna clear this all up for you. This, this item as well as the two, or two following items relate to the Nick Rodriguez Community Senior Center Roof Replacement. This total project costs about one point six million dollars. There will be four contracts that are involved with this project, all of which are subject to our project stabilization agreement. The first project or the first item was actually approved by council on September ninth. It was the, it was the construction contract to Best Contracting Services for approximately six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do the removal and replacement of the roof material. That contract was subject to the PSA, the contractor will be a signature to the PSA. Tonight, this first item that we're gonna talk about has to do with the First Amendment to the Honeywell contract. Staff, staff routinely does monitor our roofs for ventilation, air conditioning. As a result of these assessments, we find that there's a number of repairs that are necessary. The Nick Rodriguez Community Center, Senior Center has been identified for, in need of replacement. Also, the HVAC system has been up for about thirty-five years, typically twenty-five years is a good life expectancy for those sort of things. Now that we've secured funding through this grant, which is a California Natural Resources Agency state grant, we do have the money to now expedite this construction and move forward. So Honeywell's in the first, as in the first year of a, of a multi-year Building Performance Service Agreement with the city. They've consistently demonstrated reliable and trusted services provided on our HVAC work, have supported the city's HVAC system. So staff has consulted with the city attorney's office, determined that this contract is in conformance with the project stabilization agreement, that's our PSA. Honeywell and their subcontractor NV Hawthorne have agreed to be a signatory to the PSA and abide by all requirements within the project stabilization agreement. Staff recommends approval of this First Amendment for Honeywell International to their building solutions in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars to complete the nature, the necessary HVAC improvements at the Nick Rodriguez Community and Senior Center. As I stated, this was continued basically because of the contract requirements having to do with the cost of the total project being over a million dollars, which, which does bring about the, the project stabilization agreement to be part of the project. As I said, the initial contract for the contractor doing the work is going to be a signature to the PSA. This project, also the work being done, being performed by Honeywell and its subs, are also going to be subject to the project stabilization agreement in conformance with the city standards. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Bunting. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We have no public comments.
All right, any questions? Do we have a motion from council?
I was one, I was one of the, the members who pulled this item. So I, is it really, is it, is it PSA versus PLA? I'm trying to understand the difference.
So.
I think that's what brought up the discussion, was there, there seemed to be some concern that was communicated to not only myself, I'm sure others, about, by, by dividing these projects into two, three different items somehow, some way that might avoid meeting a threshold of over a million dollars that I thought was a PLA, project, you know, labor agreement. I saw, what I read earlier was a PSA agreement stabilization. So what is the difference between a PSA and a PLA? Is it just alphabet soup? What do they mean?
The city, the city determined to utilize a project stabilization agreement versus a project labor agreement. When they went through the process of getting the labor unions involved, I'm sure there's differences. What we have is a project stabilization agreement, which signifies the projects that are over a million dollars total. The contractors do need to be signature to the agreement, which basically means that they need to use union labor.
I just want, yeah, I was just trying to clarify the acronyms.
I believe it was sent out a couple different ways.
PSA is the agreement, it still meets the discussion or the concern related to local labor union, trade unions being able to participate in this project because it exceeds that million-dollar marker or whatever that threshold is.
Yes, sir. The, the terminology of a project stabilization agreement was what the city decided to utilize in these circumstances.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt this First Amendment or approve this First Amendment?
I'll move to approve.
All right, a motion in a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes four zero. Oh, with Councilmember Torres Walker excused.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number ten, purchase order with Garland Company utilizing California multiple award schedules, cooperative purchase agreement for roofing materials in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents. cooperative purchase agreement for roofing materials in the amount of $473,916.96 for the Nick Rodriguez Community Center, Community slash Senior Center Roof Replacement Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are there, are there no public comments?
There are no public comments.
All right, we have a motion to approve, a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Motion passes four zero with Councilmember Torres Walker excused.
Item number 11, purchase order for the purchase of 18 heating, ventilation, and, and air conditioning units for the Nick Rodriguez Community slash Senior Center Roofing Project with Sigler Commercial utilizing a Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Agreement in the amount of $208,251.
Mr. Mayor, if there, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Move approval.
A motion, a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Motion passes four zero with Councilmember Torres Walker excused.
Perfect, we're now to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We have one public comment. Sidney?
Good evening, council. Accessibility and public transit isn't just a policy, it's a daily survival for riders who depend on it. Everyone should be able to wait and identify their bus safely and comfortably. At the Antioch Bart Station, many bus stops still have no benches, and riders, especially those with disabilities, are forced to walk along, walk long distances to find the right bus. Most buses arrive with blank or not in service signs, only turning on the route display seconds before leaving. That creates confusion and mobility hazards. I'm asking that the city and Tri Delta Transit ensure a bus, a bench at every bus stop and to review how bus signage is handled at the station. These are small changes with major benefit, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it.
We have no further comment cards.
All right, do we have any staff communication?
None, other than just a reminder that the regularly scheduled meeting on November 11th does fall on a holiday, so council did vote to make a special meeting on November 4th, so that'll be the next council meeting outside of a normal second, you know, the first Tuesday, so.
All right, thank you very much. Council communications and future agenda items?
Yeah, we need to discuss December's schedule.
Okay.
I, I think also for November 4th, it's actually November 20th also, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second, motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Motion passes four zero with Councilmember Torres Walker excused.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned at 10:28 PM. Thank you.